Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Here. Please rise for the pledge of remarks by Councilmember Harding.
No real great words of wisdom today. I'll just wish everyone a happy Fourth of July. Please be safe, but please enjoy yourselves with family and friends.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting. A current copy of the open meeting act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon and welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate having you here and look forward to your testimony on our many items today. I'd encourage you to turn your cellphones off or at least turn them to vibrate.
Item six through eight can be considered together for Pegasus located southwest of 132nd and Fort Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item six, an ordinance to rezone this property from R6 District to MU District. Item seven, an ordinance to repeal the PUD overlay district in a R6 District for this property. Item eight, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to the mixed-use district development agreement.
Public hearing and vote on number six, seven, and eight are today. Proponents, please. Mr. Seaton.
10836 Old Mill Road. Appearing on behalf of the applicant, this is rezoned back to mixed use. The current tenant would like to explore sale options of the vacant property to the north. We think mixed use is a more appropriate use here. We'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six through eight are approved, seven to zero.
Thanks so much.
Thanks.
Items nine through 11 can be considered together for Westbury Creek located south of 213th and I Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item nine, an ordinance to rezone this property from AG District to R4 District. Item 10, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 11, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on items nine, 10, and 11 are today. Proponents, please.
Randy Kuchak with Lampard Neareston, 14710 West Dodge Road, here on behalf of the applicant, Richland Homes LLC. This is a 164-lot, single-family residential subdivision, second phase of Westbury Creek, a little bit over 51 acres, here to answer any questions that you may have today.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items nine through 11 are approved, seven to zero. Items 12 through 15 can be considered together for Redwood Winninghoff located northeast of Sorensen Parkway and Winninghoff Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 12, an ordinance to rezone this property from R4 District to R6 District. Item 13, an ordinance to approve a PUD overlay district. Item 14, a resolution to approve the final plat. Item 15, a resolution to approve the subdivision agreement.
Public hearing and vote on number 12, 13, 14, and 15 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi. Good afternoon. Paul DeCreef with Redwood, 7007 East Pleasant Valley Road, Independence, Ohio. I am with Redwood, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Motion and second. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 12 through 15 are approved, seven to zero. Item 16, a resolution to approve the Community Innovation Campus Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 1127 North 20th Street in an amount up to $385,000.
Public hearing and vote on number 16 is today. Proponents, please. Mr. Seaton.
Oh, yeah. Good afternoon. One moment here. A lot of breath, I just got down here. Community Innovation Campus. It's on 20th Street, a couple blocks north of Cummings. It's a two-acre site occupied by an older warehouse building. It's in pretty poor condition. Older building, vacant for a long time. It's going to be... Yeah, I'm a little short of breath.
I'm certain that if I write it out...
Okay.
Shouldn't we have some...
I do have a bit of lung condition, so give me just a moment.
Take your time. Yep.
How about if you just... I know we're all pretty polite with that for everyone.
Okay.
If we have questions, we could certainly have...
You want to do it that way?
Certainly, certainly. I would say it's an exciting project. It's a North Omaha project, provides a lot of jobs, takes care of a really unattractive site, provides us with a very attractive facility, puts to use a site that's been neglected for a long time and provides a great service to the community. We ask for your support.
Thank you. Other proponents today?
Michael Maroney, President of Omaha Economic Development Corporation, 2221 North 24th Street. We are the developers, owners and developers of the building, and I'm just here to answer any questions if you have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents?
How are you doing, Professor? You okay? I didn't want to trip over your leg. Donnie R. Johnson, 4928 North 52nd, the Johnson and Question Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. I noticed, Mr. Maroney, he's aged. I didn't recognize him back there. He's aged quite a bit. But this banking stuff and the stuff he's doing, we need the United States Department of Agriculture to join forces with him to bring some banking system from Fremont to Omaha. If not, then I think Mr. Maroney might find himself in some trouble, like Franklin Credit Union and that other one down in Lincoln. What was that Commonwealth Savings? You folks all got 50 cents or 85 cents off a dollar, you didn't get nothing in North Omaha. So we want to look at this thing a little bit closer about when you guys are going to bring the United States Department of Agriculture and start to subsidizing that land out there under Senator Chuck Hagel and Congress. That would be very helpful for us before we move forward on any more banks in North Omaha.
Thank you. Any other opponents today?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. This is another one of the TIF projects that I'm against, maybe largely because we don't know much about it. But as I read through the online documents that you guys, it's... Yeah, it's funny. Smirk all you want, it's funny. But it sounds to me like, oh my gosh, did CHI just buy this place? And all of a sudden now? Because if this weren't given, if they weren't given TIF, it wouldn't get done. I guess all of North Omaha will be built overnight now, probably, if that's the case. But I think there needs to be some discussion today, again, because I'm shooting my mouth off. So you can prove me wrong, but this looks like some sort of carnival scheme to me, like or a wimpy booger, I'll pay you tomorrow for a hamburger today. Somebody buys this property and all of a sudden applies for TIF and gets it, but doesn't pay property tax on whatever the value is of a dilapidated property like this? Taxes probably aren't very high at all, or did they buy it through the land bank? But the point is, the way it sounds to taxpayers is that whoever bought that property or is developing it gets today's property tax value for maybe 20, 25 years now. That's what they're going for. But the people that live in that area probably are going to pay higher taxes starting today. That's what the citizens think. You have to prove us wrong. Even the Reader Magazine implies that. Thank you. So I'm again...
Any other opponents on number 16? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Michael, if you could come up and answer some questions. Planning was not able to do so. Don, it's a little bit under the weather right now, so we're going to go ahead and get you to answer some of the questions that Larry just mentioned about how this project came to be. So can you tell us a little bit about, first, your organization, Omaha Economic Development Corporation, and what you bring to North Omaha and things like that, just so that we can have an introduction regarding your organization?
Yeah. Omaha Economic Development Corporation is a private nonprofit, 501(c)(3). We are a community development corporation. We've been in existence for 45 years. We've been in our current location since 1985. We have made a tremendous investment over the years into affordable housing, commercial revitalization, job creation, and entrepreneurial development. This piece of property we've owned since the mid-'90s. We didn't just get it. We are... It's a collaboration between our organization as the developers and owners of the building with CHI Hospital to create, relocate their commercial kitchen back to North Omaha. They were at one time at St. Joe Hospital, but when that closed down, they moved their facilities out to Bergen Mercy. Many of their employees come from North Omaha, and it's been a challenge for some of them getting away out there. CHI does need a standalone kitchen because of their capacity right now. They're doing about 3,000 meals a day to their hospitals in the region, and this is a way to help facilitate their... To do three things. One, to help facilitate their operation. Two, to redevelop a building that needs development, and to provide jobs for North Omaha citizens. Because as they grow over the next three to five years, they're going to more than double their force, and they made a commitment to us, and it's in writing, that they would seek employees from North Omaha.
Thank you. And how long has this planned regarding the new building? Has that been underway?
We actually have been negotiating for about seven years. It was about a little over a year ago, we actually signed a long-term lease. It's taken a while to put all this together, but we think we're just about there.
And did you do any public engagement with the surrounding area to include neighborhoods?
Well, yeah, through the Planning Department as part of their process of doing, letting the community know what's going on.
Okay. All right. And then you mentioned, do you have any idea of the number of jobs this will bring to North Omaha?
Well, they currently have an employee force of between 65 and 70, but their goal is the next three to five years to double that. And they're again with a commitment to target most of those jobs to North Omaha residents.
Okay. And then security to that area, or is what type... Can you describe to me what type of security? Is there going to be cameras? Is there going to be a security guard or that kind of a thing?
Well, it'll be a fenced-in property, and it will require controlled access.
Okay. And does any... Can you tell me a little bit about the lighting, how that...
Well, we will certainly be consistent with whatever requirements the city requires, and there are some requirements for lighting. And not only that, but for the safety of the employees that will be operating out of the facility.
All right. And then as far as the contract, the jobs as it relates to contracts, construction workers, can you tell me how you went about advertising the need for construction workers? Was it one bidder or what?
No, no. Well, we've had the general contractor for several years now. But one of the commitments that the contractor's made, and we require of all the general contractors, is a minority requirement. And so we will be reaching out to as many minorities as we can identify. It'll be a public solicitation for subcontractors.
And they can find that information where, when that...
Their standard site, there's a contractor site that all contractors are tied into, but we also do publicly in terms of the... At minimum, the Omaha Star.
Okay. All right. Well, the building in terms of the rendering here that we're looking at, it definitely looks very well and does give us something better than what we currently have, which is prior to you beginning to build, which was a vacant lot for a long time. So it is refreshing. I just wanted to discuss all of the items that I brought to your attention for public records, just so that the community knows what's going on, because that's just very important, especially when we want to engage the community in terms of taking ownership and pride to the area. So thank you for your time.
Okay. In your...
Thank you. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
President, Don, I think you wanted to add a couple more things.
Oh, yeah. Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. Again, thanks for your patience. I've caught my breath now and don't need to be rushing down here quite like that, but thanks for the water also. I just want to clarify for the record and reemphasize that CHI is not the owner or developer of this property. They are a tenant. It's a nonprofit, OEDC, Omaha Economic Development Corporation, that's developing this site. And if you look through the documents on the website, the application is there with the three-year pro forma, as far as the income and expenses for the first three years of the project, and the return on investment analysis. This project has a return on investment with TIF of less than 1% and would lose money without the TIF. So I think it emphasizes why TIF is important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now for the lights? Is there a motion?
Do you have a motion to close it, or do we get extended rebuttal?
Nope. The public hearing is closed. Mr. Johnson, thank you.
We just took it a worthless program to come to North Omaha. That's all I'm going to say. All right. I'll go ahead and move to...
There's a motion in a second. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Upstate.
Item 16 is approved, six to zero. Councilmember Festerson abstains. Item 17, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow a large group living in the LC District located at 2110 Papillion Parkway. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 17 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Sidney Huss from Klein Williams on behalf of the applicant, Ravi LLC, 12910 Pierce Street. Ravi's here today on its request for a special use permit for the property located at 211 Papillion Parkway. It's seeking this permit in connection with its lease of the property to Development Disability Center of Nebraska, who will use it to provide residential daycare and vocational services to developmentally disabled children and adults. I have Bethany Johnson, the executive director of DDC, and here with me this afternoon, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Donnie Johnson, North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation, 4928 North 52nd Street. These programs that we keep looking at is very similar to the one that just left. And Mr. Maroney, his wife was my teacher, counselor, when I started university in 1972. So I keep telling Mr. Maroney, I think you have some good ideas, but your wife was my teacher, and I'm trying to explain to you, some of your programs are worthless. In the meantime, he gets it misunderstood. So can we get back to some reality checks, like Michelle Obama? I'm not a Democrat, but she said we're going to get this CH and this food program fixed together.
So, Mr. Johnson, we're talking about a special use permit at 2110...
They're all fitting together, partner. That's what I'm trying to tell you, Mr. President.
Please do.
The new programs that we're coming up, all these programs, the CHI food thing, or wherever it's going to be rented, and this handicap that President Reagan killed, would you folks start bringing some things to our attention from North Omaha versus all these other programs that's worthless? They ain't working. Try some of them Meals on Wheels. It's the worst tasting food ever tasted in my life.
Thank you. Any other opponents to number 17?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha 68132. I might as well say goodbye early because I'm an opponent, because you did not interrupt him, call him out of order, and have him escorted out like you do me. You are unfair the way you run your chair, okay? You need to be replaced. Otherwise, I'm in favor of it. But I'm not in favor of your behavior, sir.
Well, you're speaking as an opponent right now, so I guess you're on the record as an opponent, Larry. Are there any other opponents today on number 17? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Going up in my district, I think it's a wonderful use for this facility, and I'm very grateful that we're adding more of these in our city. So with that, I will move to approve.
There's a motion in a second. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 17 is approved, seven to zero. Item 18, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow a broadcast tower in the DR District along with a waiver to Section 55-108 height to allow 100-foot-tall tower located at 4615 North 120th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 18 is today. We have the applicant by Zoom. Mr. Ward will get you off mute here in a second. Okay, try that. Try your name and address for the record. So I think we're getting some feedback on your end. We'll try you here again in a second, but as long as we have proponents speak, I'll call for any other proponents that might be in the room. Seeing none, any opponents?
Donnie Johnson, North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation, the Johnson and Question Foundation, to address the City Council of Omaha, Nebraska, and to answer the young man's question. I didn't call Mr. Fredson out of his name, so that's probably why he didn't have me escorted out here. We just putting up some debate so that we can see if we can get any of our programs from North Omaha. That might be why you went, where'd that fellow go? Anyway, excuse me, sir, but that's how we do it in Washington, DC. We all get to debate to get our point across, not to disrespect people.
Thank you. Any other opponents still on number 18? Seeing none. Mr. Ward, we'll try it one more time to see if this will work as the applicant. I suspect you're here to answer questions though, so I'm not sure.
I didn't call Mr. Fredson out of his name, so that's probably why he escorted out.
All right. So that's not working, but I'm sure Mr. Ward is here to answer questions if there are any. I don't see any lights, so I'm going to close public hearing and see if a councilmember wants to make a motion. Motion in a second. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 18 is approved, seven to zero. Item 19, to consider a Class C liquor license for JoJo's Diner located at 1213 Harney Street, Suite A.
Public hearing and vote on number 19 is today. Proponents, please.
My name is Alex Mullen. My address is 4549 Seward Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68104. I'm here to be the representative today for JoJo's Diner downtown for their liquor license application and here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents on number 19? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed? Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 19 is approved, seven to zero. Item 20, to consider a Class I K liquor license for Rose Blumpkin Jewish Home located at 333 South 132nd Street. A is communication from the Planning Department, B is communication and support.
Public hearing and vote on number 20 is today. Proponents, please.
Hi there. John Latka, legal counsel for the applicant, 409 South 17th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, here with proposed liquor license manager Scott Shimbara to answer any questions, but also wanted to make the council aware that we did talk to Mike Wilwarding, the building inspector, on his communication. Mr. Wilwarding noted that he was just a little confused about the outdoor area and wanted to ensure that it was completely enclosed by a fence. Talked with Mr. Wilwarding about how the outdoor area was, in fact, the pool that is already fenced in, and he noted that there shouldn't be any issues with that. But as I said, here to answer any more questions that you all might have.
Great. Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed? Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 20 is approved, seven to zero. Item 21, to consider a Class I liquor license for Sushi &amp; Go located at 3302 Q Street.
Public hearing and vote on number 21 is today. Proponents, please.
John Latka, 409 South 17th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, here for applicant Sushi &amp; Go. Here today with Deborah Ameskuah, the owner of Sushi &amp; Go, as well as proposed manager Jocelyn Ameskuah. I'm here to answer any questions you all might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Donnie Johnson, 4928 North 52nd Street, the Johnson and Question Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. To oppose this would be, in a sense, trying to ask my mentor, Mr. Hal Dobbs, who's now the mayor, who sent me to World Food Court in 19 when he was mayor. I said, "Look here, Mr. Dobbs, why should I go down and get involved with this World Food Court?" And he said, "Well, Donnie, since you're no longer in the hair business and I'm going to be mayor of Omaha, or no, House of Representatives, you need some experience." So I think I got on the wrong side, because he made me go to this World Food Court, studying with all these different beautiful countries. I welcome you here, ma'am, as well. So I hoped it would help out in that area. We did this in, what is, '81, the Civil Auditorium, about 10 different countries there. The food was good.
Any other opponents today? Seeing none. Public hearings closed. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me get us back on track here. Deborah, can you come up to the microphone?
Deborah's up there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Who are you representing?
Uh, so Jocelyn is here, the proposed liquor license manager. Deborah is back there, and there's a little bit of a language barrier, so.
Okay. I want to give you some, just say your name and address for the record, if you would.
Yeah, I'm Jocelyn Ameskuah. I live two oh two one one Worth Street, up in Nebraska, six eight oh two two.
Okay. Thanks for being here. I want to give you a quick opportunity to tell me about sushi on the go. I can guess what it is, but give me like the twenty-second rundown so I can get us back on track here.
All right, sushi and go, I'd say it's like, it's Mexican-style sushi, so it's not like Japanese where it's raw. It can be fried, baked. No, there are raw versions, but it's mostly cooked, basically. That's mostly what they center on, but then they've also added tacos, burritos, torta. That's more like what you'd expect from a Mexican restaurant, so they're starting to sort of blend.
Okay. Well, hey, welcome to the neighborhood. I wish you luck. Thank you. Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-one is approved, seven to zero. Item twenty-two, to consider a Class D liquor license for Dual Stop Sorenson located at five nine two zero Sorenson Parkway.
Public hearing and vote on number twenty-two is today. First, we'll hear from the applicant.
John Latka, four zero nine South Seventeenth Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Here with Malin Patel, who's the owner of the applicant, as well as Naraj Patel, who is the proposed manager. Here to answer any questions you have on this new gas station entity.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Mr. Volantil? Hi there, how are you?
Hey, I'm Malin Patel with Dual Stop Sorenson, five nine two zero Sorenson Parkway, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you. How long have you been in the area?
We started in La Vista. Two thousand fourteen, October, was our first gas station. We've been in the C-store industry for over ten years. We have a couple sites in New York. This one is our first one in Omaha.
So would you say that you're doing fairly well?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And have you done any public engagement in that area regarding what you're about to propose?
So the existing, the previous owner did have a liquor license, but as new owners, we have made some moves towards developing it on the interior. We're moving towards getting food in there. And then after all the few renovations, cleaning up the properties done, we're planning to have a grand reopening where we can invite everyone in the area and have them see what changes we've made as new owners.
Okay. All right, so is your, is your gas price as high as with everyone else?
Yep. Unfortunately, they are.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-two is approved, seven to zero. Item twenty-three, to consider a liquor license addition application for Pacific Cellars located at one seven nine one nine Pierce Plaza to add an outdoor area. A is communication from the planning department, B is communications and opposition.
Public hearing and vote on number twenty-three is today. I had a note, we had the applicant by Zoom, but I don't see him, Mr. Ford. Is there anyone in the audience that intends to speak as a proponent to number twenty-three? Seeing none, any opponents? I'm not going to close the public hearing for now, just in case. I'll recognize Mr. Rowe for his thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did call Jeff about this application. Because of the communication and opposition, there was some concern about noise coming from the neighborhood. And Mr. Ford assured me that what their intention is to build a ten-to-twelve-seat outdoor area just for couples to have a glass of wine. There's no intent to have music or entertainment outdoors at this facility. So I'd like to move for approval when it's appropriate.
It's appropriate right now? Is there a-
And subject to permits on that fenced-in area.
Yes, thank you. I'll go ahead and close public hearing. We do, on all these cases, encourage or require the applicants to be there, but because Mr. Rowe reached out ahead of time and had that conversation, I think that's in order. We have a motion and a second, subject to permits. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-three is approved, seven to zero. Item twenty-four, to consider a liquor license addition application for wine, beer, and spirits located at three four three five Oakview Drive to add an outdoor area. A is communication from the planning department regarding permits.
Public hearing and vote on number twenty-four is today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mike Kelly, twenty-eight oh four South Thirty-seventh Avenue. This is a patio on existing location, which is basically a package place, but it also has a retail component. So he's adding a patio to it. We would ask for approval, subject to permits, and we're here for any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Nice beard. Yes, sir. Donnie R. Johnson, forty-nine twenty-eight North Fifty-second Street. I would like to support this gentleman if this community and the city council, and my friend, Mr. Mike Albert, he gave me this movie in nineteen seventy-eight, I believe it was, no. Return to Palermo, no, or something about Palermo. Anyway, that's what we were studying, Brother Sebastian.
So, Mr. Johnson, are you talking about the liquor license?
I'm trying to figure out, is this a new liquor license, is this a new medical marijuana license you're proving?
It's on liquor license.
You mean this is not the medical marijuana, you told me out of the hall you were selling medical marijuana license.
All right, thank you. Any other opponents on number twenty-four? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-four is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you. There's been a request to take items number twenty-eight and number thirty-one off consent. So first, we'll start with the public hearings on agenda items number twenty-five through twenty-seven, number twenty-nine, number thirty, and number thirty-two through thirty-five. If you are a proponent or an opponent, feel free to come up on those items. Seeing none, public hearings closed.
Excuse me, I couldn't quite hear you. You read so fast. Is number twenty-nine one of those you pulled?
Yes. Do you want to speak on number? Are you intending to speak on number twenty-nine?
As I said, you read so fast, I don't know which ones you pulled.
Yes.
Can't hear your mic, you can't.
Oh, the public hearing was last week, wasn't it?
It's Larry Store, five oh one five Lafayette Avenue.
I'm sorry, Larry.
Six eight one three two.
Hey, Larry, I'm sorry. This was my fault. These agenda items were already held on June fourteenth, so there is no public hearing on number twenty-nine unless someone calls you up on that item. Items twenty-eight and thirty-one were polled for a separate vote, so I believe the four is Ms. Milton's right now.
Yes, the public hearing was at our last meeting, and I'll move to approve twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-nine, thirty, and then thirty-two through thirty-five.
Okay, now have the other people had a chance to look to see if they want to speak on these or not?
That was last week.
You're moving awful fast.
Motion and is there a second? I'll second it. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you. Well, now I'll move to item number twenty-eight.
You read it. An ordinance to vacate land as described on the agenda, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like for someone to come up from planning to talk about the vacating of this property and discuss if there's any plans to build that up, and if there's some, can they talk about it?
So, I, Juanita, I can probably answer your questions and speak to it.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, Dave Fanzler, City Planning. So this vacation of the alley and a portion of Thirty-Ninth Street is part of a plat that will be coming to council here at the end of July, beginning of August for the redevelopment of that site.
Okay, so we don't know what we're planning on putting there?
Yeah, it's going to be, if my memory serves me, correct me, it's four, five stories, a level of parking, and a hundred units, maybe. Let me check here real quick. Since we're not really talking about... A hundred and thirty-six units. And that, like I said, that plat will be coming to council end of July, beginning of August.
And is there a plan to do a discussion with city council or briefing on it?
We can brief anybody who wants to be briefed on it. It did go in front of Planning Board a few months ago, so we did provide all that information to council already. But if there have to be other discussions, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion on number twenty-eight? Motion and a second. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-eight is approved, seven to zero. Item thirty-one, an ordinance to approve the Shirley Tyree Theater tax increment financing redevelopment agreement. A is communications and support.
Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to separate this because this is very important to North Omaha, this theater. It does provide entertainment to the area, more importantly, North Twenty-Fourth Street. I'm very excited about the public attention in our community regarding the growth and the opportunities for youth to develop in the art arena. And again, I just wanted to set this aside to pretty much give some salute to the- All right, and so I'll go ahead and motion to approve. Thank you.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item thirty-one is approved, seven to zero.
We've had a request to take items number forty-six, fifty-five, and fifty-seven off consent. So the public hearings on agenda items number thirty-six through forty-five, forty-seven through fifty-four, fifty-six, fifty-eight through sixty-seven are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. And I'll note for council members that we have all of the liquor license managers by Zoom if needed, and we also have our library director, Laura Marlane, by Zoom if needed.
Hello, Michaela McGovern, nine two one five Meredith Avenue. I'm on number thirty-eight for Buffalo Wild Wings, one three two one four West Maple Road, and pro.
Here to answer questions, right?
Here to answer questions.
Thank you. Any other testifiers today on these items?
Donnie R. Johnson, North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation, the Johnson and Question Foundation, item numbers sixty-six and sixty-seven. It was my understanding, when I talked to some other communities about this project, that Ronco and Omaha Planning Department was going to go out and survey that four hundred and forty-nine acres of land that was donated to North Omaha from Conagra for getting tax deferments, and that they shouldn't have it. So if Ronco is going to still follow that plan from the Omaha Planning Department, since the planning department guy is here to survey that land, not to move minorities out so we can start growing medical marijuana out there when they pass it. They said they weren't going to have casinos in Nebraska, but they're having them. So we know that medical marijuana is coming. You guys are going to handle the license, should we call Mr. Mike Albert family?
This is about libraries, right? This is not about that issue.
Oh, I'm sorry. They're going to tear down that library. I agree with that as well, because I told us, Mayor, to rewire that library would be cheaper to get rid of it. Because when they set that foundation for Mutual Omaha in the future, that foundation is solid and is going to make a perfect building for Mutual Omaha. But in the meantime, can you help us in North Omaha, please?
All right, thank you. Any other testifiers on these items? Seeing none, public hearings are closed. Ms. Milton, you're recognized.
Oh, I was just going to thank Michaela McGovern from Buffalo Wild Wings for taking the time to come down here in front of the city council. So with that, I'll move to approve agenda items, then I got to go back and look. Thirty-six through forty-five, forty-seven. Through fifty-four, fifty-six, and fifty-eight through sixty-seven.
Second. Motion and a second. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item forty-six, a resolution to approve the contract with Cox Contracting, Inc. in the amount of six hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars for the Dale Clark Library building demolition project.
The public hearing on item number forty-six is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Is the gentleman for Cox Contracting Company available? The successful bidder?
Troy Anderson, City of Omaha's mayor's office. We were not aware that there was a request that a representative from Cox be available here today. So I'll try to answer any questions you might have, though.
Yes, I kind of wanted to know a little bit about the bidding process. If you could be, draw the beginning-to-end process in which this bid process took place and provide the rationale as to why the successful bidder was selected.
So yes, we followed all of the standard city protocols around requests for bids. We got a number of bids. I think there were seven total bids that came in. Cox was lowest and best.
When I, when I looked at the small emerging business contract for last month, and I saw information regarding this particular contractor, on that report, it shows that Cox Contracting has a total amount protected class of two. And then, and then over to the right, it says fourteen percent. So can you explain those numbers?
I'm going to defer to our HR and our department, Gerald Coon. He can answer better questions around small and emerging businesses.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Gerald Coon, Human Rights and Relations Department.
Yes, Gerald, thank you. The report that you guys give on a, what, every week or every two weeks, on this last one that we got is dated six twenty-eight twenty-two.
Okay.
I'm looking at Cox, and I look under the header Total Protected Class. It has two and then fourteen percent. Can you explain those figures for me, please?
So I am in receipt of the economic inclusion plan for Cox Contracting that was signed May twenty-sixth of two thousand twenty-two. And I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight individuals that would be in a protected class at work for Cox.
Why would this report be different?
I'm not in receipt of that report.
Okay, this report was emailed out on today at six twenty-eight twenty-two. It says Omaha City Council Contract Awards.
I'm not sure, Councilwoman Johnson. I am only privy to the, to the EEIP plan that has been signed by the director of the HR and our department, Franklin Thompson, that states that, in their report, that they have eight individuals.
And can I get a report on that?
Yes, I can give you-
Because there's definitely a conflict here, because I'm looking at something totally different than that.
Yes, I can get a copy of that, of the EEIP plan to you today.
Okay, appreciate that. And then, so only fourteen percent of their staffing is of a minority class, then?
I can do some more research with that, but as far- I can do some more research with that, but I, as far as I'm concerned, what I'm looking at is more than half of their staff is African-American male or Hispanic or white female.
Okay, and thank you for your time.
Oh, no problem. All right, thank you.
And Mr. Anderson, I have another question regarding Cox. My understanding is that will they be completing all of the work in terms of demolition? Or will they subcontract out the work to some other groups?
They may subcontract work. Any subcontracts would need to be in compliance with city codes and ordinances as far as everything that we sort of discussed today. But subcontracts are an option for contractors to, to sub out certain aspects of work. That information, from what I understand, was not provided as far as who they were going to hire for subcontract. We're entering into a contract agreement with the general contractor to provide the service.
So we have no idea if they will subcontract this work out to, or they, will they just completely do the entire job?
We can find out. I mean, at the end of the day, we're contracting with the general contractor to do the work. They provided an EEI plan, and so they're bound by certain requirements set forth in that plan as well as their proposal, their bid proposal. As long as they're in compliance with all of that information, if they do elect to subcontract work beyond that, then that's certainly an option that they can choose to do.
All right, and as you, as we all know, this area in terms of where the library is being, there's being demolition performed.
Yes.
We're in a underserved community, and obviously, there is lots of opportunities here for individuals to pick themselves up and obviously provide some economic growth to their families. So my question regarding whether or not this work will be subcontracted out is very valuable to this community. And so with that being said, I'd like to know the answer to that as well as if there is an opportunity for others to get that work. I, being the representative of this area, I'd like to share that information with the community so that we can present ourselves and have those opportunities. So if you could provide me with that information, I greatly appreciate it.
Absolutely. We'll be more than happy to visit with the contractor and, and should they so choose to subcontract, assuming that it's all in accordance with the plan that they've provided, as well as the contract agreements and the bid proposal. Any, any subcontract beyond that, we'll be more than happy to share that information with you.
And so can I get that information by the end of the week, please?
We, we can certainly reach out to them, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
I'll just point out that the, that the bid we received from Cox, and they, they do very, very good work, was, was by far the, the lowest price. So I, I think the contractor's estimate for what we were planning on for this project was probably more than double what they came in at. So I think that's a good start to, to the project, and I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion in a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe, Bagley, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item forty-six is approved, six to one. Item fifty-five, a resolution to approve the Omaha Council Bluffs Consortium Consolidated Submission for Community Planning and Development Programs Consolidated Plan, two thousand twenty-two Action Plan.
Public hearing and vote on number fifty-five is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Pat Evans, City Planning Department. We ask your support and approval for the two thousand twenty-two Consolidated Action Plan. It is for the program years of two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three activities. This plan is our final draft that will be submitted to HUD July twelfth, which is the deadline of two thousand twenty-two. There, we got our allocation from HUD, May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, which gives us our final numbers. Our initial draft, that was presented to the public, contained an estimated budget based upon previous allocations. When we received our final allocations, we had to then adjust our plan to accommodate the funding we received. This plan covers the community development block grant funds, the CDBG funds, the emergency shelter grant funds, which is the ESG funds, and the home investment partnership funds, which are the home funds. We received in CDBG funds, our actual dollars, was four million, three sixty-nine, four oh seven. There was a decrease in funding from our previous allocation. In home funds, we received two million, four hundred and twenty-one, two oh six, which was an increase of our previous allocation. And our ESG allocation was decreased to three hundred and ninety thousand, seven sixty-eight. Now with these allocations, we had to make some adjustments on our proposed budget. So there was a few major adjustments that I will speak to. There were some minor adjustments as well. So one of the major adjustments is, like, maybe I need to turn it down here. Okay. One of our major adjustments, okay, now I'm not hearing me. Okay, one of our major adjustments are that for the Y Street Improvement, we decreased that budget from five hundred and forty thousand to one fifty. That was based on several decisions. It was thought that the engineering and architectural development of that would take us into next year. So we decreased that to the one fifty to cover that kind of activity, engineering and architectural fees. We are planning in our two thousand twenty-three budget to include funding for the first phase of that improvement. The other change is if the Love Jazz Building sells this year, the program income from that sale, we are proposing to use it for North Twenty-Fourth Street Corridor Commercial Facade Program. Those details have not been worked out, but it had been requested that the funding received from that particular activity would stay in North Omaha along that corridor. The other change is we had funded J-Su Housing, which is a nonprofit organization that we've been funding for many, many years to do new construction. No longer has an executive director or staff, so their capacity is at such that we cannot fund them to do new construction until that organization reorganizes. To replace them, we propose to fund Kennedy Square East, which is a development through Brinshaw Development in the CNI area, Chorus Neighborhood area, for a project that will be on the site of the Spencer Homes. It will produce a hundred and two units of mixed-income housing. Sixty-three of those units would be low, moderate-income housing as well. The other thing is, one of the minor changes is that we are going to fund an additional three houses, or two houses, I'm sorry, under our urban homestead program that we contract with Project House Works to do. So with that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions, ask for your approval and support of this action plan.
Thank you for that overview. Any other proponents today?
Good afternoon, Nicole Ingalls, Planning Department. I work specifically with the Emergency Solutions Grant Funds. So Pat asked me to come up and explain the changes that I made there. We last year received approximately four hundred and three thousand dollars, and as she noted, this year it was reduced to three hundred and ninety thousand. I only made one change, and that was to reduce our budget to Santa Frances House by thirteen thousand dollars. We have three activities that we fund with the Emergency Solutions Grant. There are emergency shelters, of which we fund three, Catholic Charities Domestic Violence Shelter, Stevens Center, and Santa Frances House. And then we fund two programs for Rapid Rehousing, which is a housing plus case manage, rental assistance plus case management program. And we fund Heartland Family Service and Together, Inc. for those programs. We didn't want to reduce those funds at all because rents have been increasing, and so they have to follow FMR. I'm sorry, I'm blanking on what that acronym is. And HUD lowered the fair market rent, there we go. HUD lowered the fair market rent this year for single-family apartments, which is not the experience that our providers are having. They're seeing increases in rent, and we need a lot of those single-family or single-person apartments. So to decrease the Rapid Rehousing budget just would not have been wise, because they're already seeing huge increases in rent, and we want people to be getting out of shelters and into their own homes. And then the final thing that we fund is HMIS. HMIS, the Homeless Management Information System, is the data collection system that helps all of our providers communicate together and so that we can help find people when maybe they get pulled for a Rapid Rehousing Program or a prevention program. And it helps us know if we have disparities, where they are. It's really important and has been really running on steam, low steam for a long time with the funding. So it was important for us to keep that budget where it was at. I think that's about all that I had. Oh, in our action plan, it says that we will have sixty percent of our funds go towards emergency shelter, which is the maximum amount that we can by the regulations, minimum of fifty, maximum of sixty. So with the reduction in that emergency shelter budget, it does bring it a little bit below sixty to fifty-eight point seven percent, but it's about forty-eight hundred dollars. So we really felt that it was important to keep that in the getting people into housing.
Thank you. Other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents?
Larry Store, five oh one-five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, six-eight, one-three-two. In the spirit of independence today, I have to object and be against something. So I want to be against this because once again, I don't think most of the citizens know anything about this. And if this is all that we can know about it, it's a little difficult to read because it's in legal ease, and some of the words have implications different for different people. I'd like to ask questions like, well, why are we consorting with Council Bluffs? We're two different states here. The next question is, oh, do they, are we going to have them on our planning and development programs and our planning and development chairs? We don't have any control on them now. How would we control anybody on the Council Bluffs side of the river? The next question, is this the golf course that we're taking for housing? What kind of housing is this? I can't read all of your documents that you have on all of these items. So I'm not familiar with this, because I don't think we've talked about this before, have we? But you're maybe voting on it today? Isn't that improper? Yeah, the mayor authorized this and authorized that. And it's okay because, oh yeah, community development block grant implies that's not my money. But I'd be willing to bet that in the end, some of this will be out of my pocket. So why do I want to consort with Council Bluffs? Please feel free to ask questions and explain that in more in depth, because I'd like to know. We're an independent state, I thought. Thank you.
Any other opponents on number fifty-five? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. This question is for Planning Department. Can someone answer Larry's question regarding the public engagement regarding the consolidated plan that's being presented here today? Thank you.
Yeah, so the consolidated planning process has a, well, and this is the action plan, which is a subpart of the consolidated plan.
Can you see your name or time?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Nicole Ingalls, Planning Department. So every five years, we do our consolidated plan, during which we did in two thousand nineteen. So we did all that prep in two thousand eighteen. We had, ooh, seven or eight focus groups and three or four public meetings. And then it also has a public comment period. We advertise that public comment period in the Omaha World Herald. At the time, we were using El Perico. We also use the Omaha Star, and then we also have our social media that we post on regularly to advertise that public comment. Since then, we've also begun using Constant Contact so that we have a better way to track how many of our emails are going out. It also helps avoid going to people's spam folders, because prior to starting to use Constant Contact, they just all came from my email. So the hearing, the public comment period and public meeting for this plan specifically was in January of this year, and then we had a thirty-day public comment period. That was a virtual public meeting because of the pandemic. And we're starting to get back to public meetings, regular public meetings. So during the HAP, the Housing Affordability Action Plan, we've had seven public meetings as well as doing a lot of Constant Contact outreach. And while I have the microphone, I would like to plug that we have our Housing Affordability Action Plan survey that will close on July eighth, and we would love if everyone would go take that. It is on our website at planning.cityofomaha.org and on our social media. What other questions can I answer for you?
That's it. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Can I address the consortia real quick?
Sure.
Just so that everyone knows, we're in a consortia with Council Bluffs only for our home funds, and that's because Council Bluffs is too small to get their own home funds from HUD. So we entered into an agreement with them years ago that they are eligible for about ten percent of our home funds. That also applies to the home ARP, which is specifically housing for exiting people from homelessness.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was going to say, and Nicole, that was great. I'm glad you walked us through that process, because that's one of the things I was going to bring up to, is that not only do you go through this very regimented process for public input and comment and to make the, the community aware of what the funding levels are and for what programs, and then what, what happens, and you're doing that all based upon an assumption of what you're going to get from HUD. And then HUD comes in, let's see, what are we, in June still, I think, earlier this month, or maybe at the end of last month, and, and basically gives you, I think it's sixty days to, to respond. So because we don't have a meeting after this date until later on in July, it's important that we pass this today, because this has to be done before a date certain, which would be between now and that date. So I want to thank Bill and Pat and Nicole and your whole department for, for all the work and flexibility and response that you give to our community.
Thank you. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Oh, thank you. And I also wanted to go even further. On page seven, that's attached to the agenda item, and by the way, the action plan, I think, is very easy to read. And on page seven, it states, it talks about the citizen participation plan. There were public notices. It was on Facebook, Twitter, and our website. And the act, for the action plan, there were also flyers distributed in not only English, but if you wanted to read them in Spanish, Nepali, Somali, or Karen digitally throughout the community, you could do that. If you have any questions or wanted to have notices sent to you, information sent to you, you can email hcdcomments@cityofomaha.org. And if you miss any meeting, they record and transcribe all the meetings and then put them on their website at planninghcd.cityofomaha.org. So I would have to say that there is so much reach out, and in addition, then you record the reach out that you've done so that anybody can get the information at any time, sitting at home on their own computer. So I, I appreciate all the work that you've done. I know how difficult it is to go through everything and in the short timeframe that you've done it. And by the way, if we took the money and just gave it back, it would just go to some other city. So I appreciate that we're actually using the money in our city, and I think you do a great job in figuring out how to use it appropriately for better affordable housing. And the homelessness prevention that we're really focusing on, I want to tell you, is making a huge difference, because that saves us money, preventing homelessness in the first place, as opposed to waiting and then going on the back end. So thank you for your efforts on that focus. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Bagley, Mr. President.
Yes.
Item fifty-five is approved, seven to zero. Item fifty-seven, a resolution to approve the agreement with the Nebraska Enterprise Fund in the total amount of two hundred ninety-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars and seventy-seven cents to provide operating support for the administration of the Micro and Small Business Recovery Program due to the COVID-nineteen crisis.
Public hearing and vote on number fifty-seven is today. Proponents, please.
Thank you, Pat Evans, City Planning. This program is funded through the CDBG CV funds that we received in two thousand nineteen. We did go out to RFP and contract all of the funds that we received to various agencies. We did go out to RFP and contract all of the funds that we received to various agencies. This was one of those agencies that initially did receive funding. They performed on their contract, turned in and submitted the demographics and the required documentation, and that program was closed out successfully. We contracted with Charles Drew and the Nebraska Urban Indian Coalition as well to provide services. The Nebraska Urban Indian Coalition was supposed to provide mental and behavioral assistance to COVID-related stress factors and that kind of thing. They were unable to perform under their contract, so ID obligated their funding. Funding was also attributed to Charles Drew. We went through several amendments on their contract, trying to find a good fit for them because they were unable to perform again under their contract. The last contract, they were supposed to provide testing, follow-up, and notification for COVID. They deemed they were unable to meet our documentation requirements, so they did not perform as well. So I had to then deobligate the funds from there. When I deobligate the funds, I then have to find a project that can spend the money in a timely way and meet the requirements and the time span that we are under. Nebraska Enterprise performed very well. What they provide is micro enterprise assistance to businesses, five persons and under. The fifth person or the ownership constitutes a micro enterprise. What they provided, and it has to be with these funds, it has to be COVID, directly COVID-related. So here we are in 2022, and you're looking at activities that can still directly correlate to COVID and the COVID impact. There are businesses still out there. They're still striving and trying to thrive and survive. And that basically is what Nebraska Enterprise did. They provided assistance, technical assistance, and up to a $10,000 grant to assist businesses to retain their current, the business's current employees or to help restructure their business so they can survive in this environment. So with the COVID funds, we have to have 80% drawn down by August of 2023. So I had to find a program that could spend the funds in a very timely way so that we could then meet that drawdown expenditure timeline. So that's what this contract is. It is a second contract with Nebraska Enterprise to perform micro enterprise activities. They last time reported assisting 35 businesses. We anticipate that they will pretty much do the same as as far as the goal. They will complete their their activities by mid-next year, giving me time then to get the demographics and get the recordings so we can then close this out as well and meet that 80% drawdown requirement. Happy to answer any questions?
Thank you. It's evident you know your programs well. Are there any other proponents here today that want to speak on item 57? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And thank you, Pat, for providing that information. This program is very much needed into our community, and it definitely fills a gap for those that have been impacted by COVID. So I'm going to go ahead and move that we approve this. Thank you.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Harding is absent. Johnson?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Palermo?
Yes.
Rowe?
Yep.
Bagley?
Aye.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Item 57 is approved, six to one. Item 68, an ordinance levying a special tax and assessment on all lots and pieces of real estate within Street Improvement District 6881 for improvements to Ridgewood Avenue from Poppleton Avenue to Hickory Street. A is an amendment of the whole requested by the law department. B is communication and opposition.
The vote on number 68 is today. Are there any lights, further comments, or motions? Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
You want, Danny, you want to go first? Yeah, I'm going to pull my.
He yields the floor to Mr. Bagley. So Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thank you, colleagues. We've had multiple discussions, as we've mentioned in the Board of EK and our prior council meetings. And we put a lot of work into this, talking to our staff and legal. And Mr. Stube, if I could ask a question of you really quick.
Bob Stube, Public Works.
Good afternoon, Bob. We had a conversation this morning in our pre-council meeting. If you want to just rehash very briefly what we talked about there so when we go forward, what this is going to look like.
Yeah, so you're you're specifically talking about the assessments and when it comes down to corner lots, is that what you're referring?
Well, that's correct. I'm actually 69, but yes.
Well, we're on 68 right now, which is not corner lots.
All right, then, let, Bob, I'll get back to you in a minute on 69, okay? But on 68 here, in respect to the amendment of the whole that we're doing here, several have spent time with the neighbors that are involved here. And I know this goes back to 2018 when this first went into effect. And then the city came up with the policy to pay 50%. We paid 60% on this. And the amendment of the whole that we're requesting today is asking for 68%. So I'm comfortable with this. My colleague, Mr. Palermo, I think you had some questions or anything to add to this before we go on?
Sure.
The floor is yours, my friend.
Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. And yeah, like I said last week, we we've had lots of discussions on this particular SID. It's been here the whole entire time that I've been elected. We've learned a lot through Public Works. We incorporated a street policy that we didn't have before. We voted on changing that to 60% shortly after the street policy was enacted. And to be quite honest, I probably know more about this road on Ridgewood than I should because it's not in my district, but for good reasons. Because I've always believed that we, as the city, are responsible for the city roads, regardless of what the policy says. But I know we have a policy, and most of the time it applies. I don't think it applies to this particular vote that we're going to have because of the challenges, because of the uniqueness. I know many in Public Works would disagree. But again, with the change orders that took place, and keep in mind, at the end of the day, when we always say, well, citizens of Omaha have to pay for this. Well, you're exactly right. But it's an actual city road within the city that gets public use. So you're right, we do have to cover it. But so are the homeowners along this area. They're covering it as well. And I believe they went above and beyond. I know we had this in front of us at the Board of EK. I know we've talked at length throughout the years over it. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to make a motion to amend this to 75% on the city's behalf of what we would pay for this SID.
I'll second. That's a floor amendment. It's been seconded. As are further, Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Yes, this, I guess, wasn't something that we had discussed before. So I was, I'm just maybe at questioning what the what the rationale is to move it from, and I won't even say the 68%. I think the reason it got to 68% was that the amendment of the whole takes care of a change order that occurred during the process that I think when when minds met, decided that it was, that should not have been probably a cost passed on to the the fronting property owners. So I'd just like to maybe further understand the rationale for the amendment that would move it to an additional amount above and beyond what we had talked about earlier.
Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
You know, I'm always willing to consider things. And I've always said I really like having discussion at 10:30 because I don't like to be surprised with things at 3:15. But I can justify moving it to 68 because of the specific reasons that we were given with this change order, and I'll support that. My problem is that if we just pick another number, I worry about the precedent that we're going to set for future projects. If we want to change the policy, I think we change it moving forward. But at this point, we've budgeted money, we've budgeted for 50%. We engaged an entire committee that involved a state legislature. I think Franklin Thompson was on it. There were a lot of people. So I guess I'm just, I'm not comfortable just arbitrarily picking a higher number. But I am in support of paying for that changeover, or that changeover, change order. And I will support the 68%, but it, I just wanted to let you know what my, kind of my rationale was. Since, and everybody else that we've approved in the past who got 50, I just, I'm also thinking of some fairness and equity. And so now we're going to have the taxpayers pay even more when we haven't done that before. And then we've had previous owners who haven't gotten the benefit of that. So I guess in fairness and equity, I'll support the 68 because it's covering the unanticipated change order. So that, that's why unfortunately I'm going to vote no on the amendment because I hadn't had any further discussion before now. And I think that that's the fairest, the most equitable thing to do for not just this district, but for everybody else involved in a road improvement district. It's my rationale.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. And I certainly appreciate that. I made mention a couple of weeks ago that I was going to ask to change this for more based on all the data I had in front of me. And quite honestly, when we talk about change orders, look no further than the weekly agenda where on any given week, you will see change orders to projects that we bid out to contractors for a set amount based on maybe an engineer's estimate on what the project may cost. And a change order usually, most of the time, comes in for an added expense. And that change order gets paid by us. In this particular case, with this SID, because we formed this, we formed this SID and RMD with the street policy we have, there were so many wrinkles in it, we really didn't have a project like this in front of us. So to compare it to other neighborhoods, or even compare it to other neighborhoods moving forward, it would be hard pressed that we will not see this again, especially with all the change orders. So as I said, when we have change orders daily on the agenda that we absorb as a city, for the benefit of the city, I don't think it's right because our our street policy, although our Public Works Department put a lot of hard work, dedication and effort into making it as ironclad as it could be, it's just we have projects that come before us that we're not prepared for. And this was one of them. And and there's a lot of data that I don't have to guess did we all receive. I know we all received the emails and the phone calls and the data. And where I came up with the 75% was from that by looking at change orders and even subtracting some of the fines and penalties that the residents along this area thought that the contractor should pay for delay in the project. I didn't factor that in. And so that's where I came up with 75. We approve change orders all the time. We did actually today on agenda item number 48 and 49, they were both change order fives, fives, five change orders on that particular project. But in this particular case, I believe that these people are are having to absorb the change orders. And I know we will not see a project like this come before us. One, because we'll tweak the street policy and not have these issues we had with this one. And for two, because at the end of the day, as I've said for a long, long time, city streets are city responsibility. And it is a luxury that certain parts of the city are able to pitch in and fix their unapproved roads. And we should take whatever we feel is a fair and common ground on where we're at. And that's why I proposed the 75% to be honest. Thank you.
Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you. A couple of items. One is when, I'll address the change orders. Some of those change orders that we approve are for additional work that, or there is the ability written within the the contract to expand the scope of services or additional work. But what we're doing here with this, what I thought we were doing with the the amendment was exactly that. We were addressing the change order that, as I said, I think when heads met, decided that it was a cost above and beyond what what should have been attributed to the the fronting property owners. So we are taking care of that that change order in this case. And again, I think that, and I don't necessarily disagree with with Council Vice President Palermo about the the whole argument about the streets. But I also don't think that this is probably the the appropriate time to just, you know, kind of arbitrarily change what that that policy is without, you know, further discussion and and some consensus among council members as to what, if any, amendments need to be made to to the existing street policy. So again, I'm supportive of of the the amendment which takes care of the the change order that we've been discussing. And any, you know, future conversation we have about a roads policy, I'd be glad to take part in.
Thank you. No further lights? There was a motion and a second to, on a floor amendment to adjust the city's participation to 75%. Roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Bagley.
Aye.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, five to two. Item 69, an ordinance levying a special tax and assessment on all lots and pieces of real estate within Street Improvement District 6883 for improvements to Woolworth Avenue from South 80th Street to Ridgewood Avenue. A is an amendment of the whole requested by Councilmember Bagley.
Vote on number 69 is today. Are there any lights or motions? Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Is Mr. Stube still back there?
I am still back.
Thanks, Mr. President. We're on 69 now, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, my friend. Bob, can you talk about the conversation we had today regarding this item?
Yeah, so obviously, the the street improvement districts slash road maintenance districts is a complicated process to begin with. And and so it's it's important for city staff to have a a policy so that when they communicate with people that want to have an improvement to their road is that there's something that our staff can utilize to assist those property owners. And one of the things that that our staff deals with on on some projects is corner lots. And and so obviously, we would like to have some, a little bit more clarity with regard to how corner lots may be treated. But obviously, there are provisions within state law and obviously code that identifies certain ways for properties to be assessed. So any changes to the policy that would identify corner lots would have, obviously have to be conferred with the law department to make make sure that that we come up with something that is considered fair and equitable to all that are affected by it before we would come back to you with any change to the policy.
A great answer, and that's what, we had a good conversation this morning about that. And the goal of that is, correct me if I'm wrong, is it's a process we're working on between law, your staff, and the council staff and all the parties involved so we can make the policy better going forward to what it was from the beginning. Is that fair to say?
Correct.
Okay. I appreciate your help on that, Bob, because I know, as Councilman Palermo had mentioned, in our Public Works Committee, we had a lot of work on this. And I thank Councilman Palermo for helping me along from when this started several months ago and and your staff for getting me up to speed on all the, it wasn't an easy thing learning about that and and how that started in 2018 to where we're at today. So I think prior to me being on the council, the good knowledge that your staff has, that we go forward, we'll have something that'll be better, that'll work for, it'll work better for everybody. So I appreciate it, Bob. Thanks. for everybody. So I appreciate it, Bob. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further lights?
The amendment of the whole.
Motion to approve the amendment of the whole.
There's a motion and a second. Mr. Rowe, you're recognized.
So I just want to be clear on this. The homeowners on these corner lots benefited by improved streets on both sides of their house, front, front of their house, side of their house. And we're going to take away, we're going to have the rest of the city pay for one of those streets instead of them. Is that the way I understand that?
I believe that's correct. Can Mr. Begley explain if you want?
Yeah, so, good question, Councilmember Rowe. So my understanding is that if there is an SID that was formed, that's a corner lot, and then at some point in the future, an SID forms on the other end, then we're trying to make a policy better so that corner lot homeowner will not get billed twice for different SIDs. Now, what that looks like going forward, I'll let Mr. Stube jump in, how we're going to determine that, that's what we're working on going forward. Is that correct, Bob?
Bob Stube, Public Works. So again, I think there's an agreement with regard to that corner lots definitely benefit from two improved streets. As far as how the policy will be changed in, in the future to address that, there's no, I guess, hard and fast idea relative to how that might end up changing. And, and that's why I tried to make the point that this is something that is kind of rooted in, in state law and city code, and so we definitely need to confer with the Law Department to make sure that we're fair and equitable, because there's no question that corner property owners definitely would benefit by improved roads on both sides of them.
Mr. Rowe, the floor is still yours if you want it?
Yeah, so, so the city is participating, if this was not going to pass, it's going to be a 50-50 split with the city, right? On both, on both, on both sides?
Bob Stube, Public Works. So again, the policy establishes that the city will contribute 50 percent, the property owners will contribute 50 percent. In this particular case, we had two separate street improvement districts, and so obviously, the, the corner lots are getting assessed for the improvements that were identified and, and completed within both of those street improvement districts.
Okay. I'm, I'm having a real, this is a complicated issue. These streets are really complicated in there. And I voted for 68 because I, I did feel like the neighbors there were asked to contribute for 120, you know, people in 120 lot subdivision were being improved, really, and I felt like that was probably legit. Here, we've got a homeowner that bought a house on a corner, and they're asking to not pay for one of the streets, and we're, and we're going to give them a credit of a considerable amount of money. I'm just having a hard time understanding how we came to that.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilmember Rowe, that's a really great question. I, I think in simplest terms, we know that a corner lot benefits, especially this corner lot, but does it benefit to pay double what everybody else does? And we don't think it's quite there. And they, and they admit that it is a benefit. So it's another tweak to the street policy that we've had before, but again, it's unique because I believe it started as one, it ended up as two, which means they got assessed twice. It certainly is a benefit, but it's not a, a double whammy benefit for them. That's probably the simplest way I can define it for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thanks. And I, I would argue that had the, had the two road districts been done together, which a lot of times they have been done before, then they would have looked at that and they would have assessed per lot. So they wouldn't have got double, I call it double whammied. So the, these two corner lots, the reason they have to pay double is because the two streets decided that not combine their project into one project. And you know what? The people that live on that street, I would say that the people that live on both the streets that are being improved, they're both enjoying each other's streets, yet they only had to pay for one. So just because you have a corner lot, doesn't mean that you're somehow benefiting from two streets where the rest are only benefiting from one, just like in the prior where you said 120 people were benefiting. Well, those 100 people that are benefiting aren't, aren't paying a dime. So I, I would argue in this particular case, I actually think it's inequitable to charge somebody on a corner lot twice. They're, they're certainly not getting twice the benefit, more so than the other people on the road improvement districts, because they're driving on each other's road as well, yet they only had to pay one time. So that, that's how, that's how I justify this. I just think we should have had a policy that anticipated this ahead of time. We just didn't recognize it until it was like, well, in our face, and unfortunately, the homeowners that got two bills and were paying, I think it's essentially close to $50,000. And, and to me, to me, it was just an inequitable policy that we just didn't realize we had until after the fact. So that, that's, that's where I am with, with this one.
Thank you. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Mr. Stube, I, I think you said it here this afternoon and was said earlier today as well, too, that there are some legal requirements that, as it relates to valuation, and there is some benefit that, that there, there has to be something paid for. Is that not correct?
Yeah. So again, it goes back to the policy is essentially establishes a 50-50 split between the city and the property owners. And then from the standpoint of the assessment, there's really two methodologies that property owners can use. One would be an equitable split between all of the affected property owners, and that's something that they can agree to. And the other way would be based on front footage. And so when you end up with corner lots, there's no question that they end up having more front footage than maybe a, a lot that's somewhere in between the two intersecting streets.
So if, if, I believe what we're being asked on this amendment of the whole is that we essentially waive the entire assessment on one of the two fronting corner lots, lot lines, I'll say.
Yeah. If, if I'm correct, is that you are waiving the assessment on two corner lots, and that assessment would essentially then be covered by the city, and therefore the city's contribution to that particular improvement district would be greater than what's established within the policy.
So there, in, in essence, there's no contribution for one of the fronting streets of either one, of one or the other SIDs, correct?
There, there is no contribution from two corner lots that are, that are on one of the street improvement districts.
When, one side's getting it for free, kind of, right?
One side of the lot is getting it for free, yes.
Okay. So Mr. Cousy, would, is there, is there a legal issue with that?
Matt Cousy, Law Department. I'm not going to presume to answer this because Mr. Endenbosh is in the room, so I'm going to have Mr. Endenbosh come up.
Bernard Endenbosh, Deputy City Attorney. And then really, the concept that Mr. Stube was talking about is, is we have the ability to specially benefit, specially assess property to the extent that property is specially benefited, which is the whole concept of why we're able to specially assess for street improvement districts. The issue that you're raising here is really more an equalization issue between this particular person who is having their street improvement, their assessment for the street improvements waived versus other people in the district who are not. I think it's legally permissible as far as we still have, we have the ability to make a determination that somebody isn't specially benefiting. It's whether you're treating people equally within the district that I think is the question, that your particular question brings up. And again, by waiving it, there is certainly a vulnerability to do that. I don't know that I'm going to, that I would conclude by necessity that the answer is yes, but obviously, once you waive one of the, you, you basically have a particular property owner that I think you can make a pretty good argument benefits, at least to some extent, by having this improvement adjacent to their property, whether it's their front or they're not. And there's always, frankly, it, it's more difficult for us to prove a per lot assessment methodology than a front footage, just because of the nature of, of trying to establish that. So I think it's more an equalization issue between the property owners than it really is our ability to, to, your, your ability to waive it versus not waive it.
Thank you. And I, and I think every, everyone who's spoken so far is, at least in their comments, had some acknowledgement or reference to the fact that there is some benefit regardless of which side of the corner property line we're talking about. So, but in this case, we're talking about 100 percent waiver of one of those two SIDs.
For, for these two property owners that happen to have property that are part of both SIDs, correct, we're, we're going to waive it?
But it sounds like we've all acknowledged to some degree that there is some benefit, but we're still giving 100 percent waiver of one of those SIDs. When, there are two cases here, and each one of those basically are getting a, a free side, even though we've, most people here acknowledge that there's some benefit to both sides.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, rhetorical question, I think.
Yeah, that was a rhetorical question, though. Thank you, Mr. Endenbosh. So I, I think in a similar fashion to what I had on, on the, the previous item, I, I'm all for these discussions. I'm, I'm, and we all know that the corner lots are an issue, but it sounds like we've all acknowledged that there is some benefit to each side of a corner lot and the improvements for the streets on each side of that, but I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable giving 100 percent of a, of a credit, if you will, when there is clearly some benefit to, to that side that's being 100 percent waived. So I, I guess, again, I, I think the corner lot is an issue that we need to address. I, I think to give 100 percent waiver in this instance probably isn't equitable. I think there is some level that, that should be addressed. So if, if there, I know there's a, a motion and a second, and if it's, if it stands that way, I'll have to vote against it, but if there's a, if it doesn't pass and there's maybe a, a layover that we can address, I'd say another time to discuss what might be an equitable, more equitable solution, I'd be open for that as well.
Thank you. I'll just provide a few thoughts, too, since I haven't yet. I think my line of thinking on this and support for the amendment of the whole, back Councilman Begley, is similar to what Ms. Melton described. In the previous case, I think by everyone's acknowledgement, there were issues with it, there were troubles with the project. It was before the policy was working well, before there was a policy at all, and everyone, I think, was trying to find a way to address that in a fair and equitable way, whether that was 75 percent or 68 percent or what have you, and that was done. This one, I think, is different, though. I think when it was brought to our attention, there was a weakness in the overall policy as it applies to corner lots. We struggled to try and find a way to address that issue in this case, realizing it's also an issue that needs to get addressed going forward. So I just wanted to be sure, Mr. Begley, I'll ask you this question as, as the Chair of the Public Works Committee, that, that is in fact the intention of the committee, that although what we have in front of us here might be a stopgap measure to address this particular incident, and I, and that's how I would see it, because I don't think the way it's being done probably is the way you want it, we would want to have it done going forward, but it, it does address the situation until we do that. It is your commitment as Public Works Chair to work on that, and that the committee will work with the Public Works Department to devise a change to the overall policy going forward so we don't experience this again, right?
That's absolutely correct, Mr. President. And again, with planning and law that has worked on this, this has been out there a long time, and, and it takes time to fix this. So with number 69 here, after this vote, the effort will be committed in the continuation of trying to fix this and making a better policy that is better for everybody. So we absolutely are committed to that. And as Chair of the Public Works Committee, as you referenced, that absolutely will be the case.
And that will be done with expediency, right? Because there's more and more of these products being applied for, and I'm sure we'll experience more corner lots in the near future.
Correct.
Thank you. That's, that's the basis of my support for that amendment of the whole as well. And by the way, I had a project earlier in the agenda that was also a corner lot in my district, and I felt for that person who didn't want that assessment or that project. But that property owner was in the minority of his petition process, and so the project was completed, and he was not double assessed, and so we did not go up to these, to these, these steps or these efforts to try and address it, because that was currently addressed under the current policy, I believe. So that was the differentiation there for me. Having said that, there's no further lights, so there's a motion and a second on the amendment of the whole. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo, Rowe, Begley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
The amendment of the whole is approved, five to two. Item 70, an ordinance to establish a Class B flammable liquid storage district, number B-211 at 7,500 Mercy Road for Bergen Mercy Hospital.
The vote on number 70 is today. Are there any lights or motions? There's a motion and a second. Roll call.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe, Begley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Abstained.
Item 70 is approved, six to zero. Councilmember Festerston abstains. Item 71, an ordinance to approve a redevelopment agreement with the Omaha Streetcar Authority for the street car in an amount up to 356,000, sorry, 356,400,000. A is communication and opposition.
The vote on number 71 is today. Perhaps I'll start. I don't see any, okay, Ms. Melton, your light's on.
He'll start.
Okay.
You know, every once in a while, you can start.
I like to
I'll let you start.
Defer to my councilmembers, but
I just saw no other lights on, so I didn't want you to just
Yes, I, I agree. So I'll, I'll start, and there may be additional comments or questions too, and I hope that there is, because I spent, you know, 45 minutes on this at our last meeting, asking a lot of questions about this redevelopment agreement and what it means as it applies to the street car. And I appreciate the other councilmembers that did, that did that as well, because this is a complex project we're talking about here, and it's really important that we get this correct. We need to ask the tough questions, and we need to exercise our fiduciary responsibility as this project continues to come before us. And it is a complex financing mechanism we're talking about in this redevelopment agreement that we've never done before. So I think that's very important. And frankly, I don't think it's very well understood by the public. So that's part of my effort in having these public hearings like we've had, is to have these discussions and make sure we're doing our due diligence, diligence, and getting, giving folks the ability to weigh in on everything. There were additional briefings just today, the councilmembers on this issue. I think councilmembers appropriately said, even though this isn't the yes or no decision on a street car, that prior to us voting on this redevelopment agreement, we wanted to see at least the tentative results of an independent third-party analysis on the economic development projections and tax increment financing projections that are frankly key to the whole operation working. So I wanted to talk about that a little bit with Mr. Curtis or Ms. Taylor, whoever would prefer to engage on this. And I know in some ways you prefer not to engage on it, because it's still a preliminary findings, but in my opinion, we're at a point in this project where everything should be a public conversation, and everything should be a public document. And so I do want to engage maybe Mr. Curtis first, since you're sitting at the diocese, on the initial findings from the Munich cap proposal, even though I know that's still being completed, and there's a lot of, you know, language in the summary here that talks about it being tentative, analyses could be refined, and that any changes could actually be material in nature. But I think it'd be your conclusion that what you've seen so far from them, and what was presented to city councils so far today, is that the findings in their analysis are largely consistent with the HDR study and your interpretation of how this would work. Is that an accurate assessment?
Steve Curtis, City
Steve Curtis, City Finance, yeah, the way that Munich cap came up with their calculations, while different and coming at it from a different angle, they did seem to support very similar numbers as HDR had found or proposed.
I want to say it's $10 or $20 million less than originally thought, but we're talking about, you know, 490 or 500 million dollars. That's not a huge discrepancy in your analysis, right?
Yeah, and I do think there were a few things that the HDR model had included in their revenue streams that weren't included in the Munich cap revenue streams.
I will say it's right at the last minute, like a lot of things has felt to me on this project. I mean, I know, and I appreciate Mr. Curtis and Ms. Taylor pushing hard to get that analysis to us, but that was today, and some councilmembers I know had that briefing at 1:00, one, one hour before our 2:00 meeting, so I continue to be concerned about that flow of information and all the things I think we need to do this correctly. Ms. Taylor, I want to give you a chance to come up and talk about a floor amendment that you're, you think needs to be accomplished as well, should this move forward today?
Good afternoon, Jennifer Taylor, City Lot Department.
I know the floor amendment is to propose, that a councilmember can propose if they wish, is to sub out what would be Exhibit F and G, right? Do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Uh, to be clear, it would be to make a revision, essentially sub out Exhibit F and add to Exhibit G. So Exhibit F, as we discussed two weeks ago when we had the public hearing, are essentially the guidelines for the use and approval of tax increment financing that the city would commit to following as part of this agreement, would be a binding obligation upon the city to review and award tax increment financing pursuant to these guidelines. After having a number of conversations with our Munich cap analysts, it became clear that, well, it became clear to me that although we had intended for years 16 to 20 in any area that's designated as extremely blighted to be fully designated or allocated to the city's obligations with regard to the streetcar, that wasn't clear in the Exhibit F that I had attached originally to the redevelopment agreement. So I have revised Exhibit F to make that clear, that in any place where we have a redevelopment project that is an extremely blighted area, that those years 15 to 20, or 16 to 20, my apologies, are entirely allocated to the city's redevelopment note, that the developer will get the first 15. So that change has been made, and then the second change that was made to comport those guidelines with the initial analysis performed by Munich cap is to be consistent across all six blocks of the area. So the initial district and the influence area will have a district, and we will collect kind of that backend TIF that is in those guidelines. Those were the two changes that were made to Exhibit F, and that's what I have asked this council to amend the agreement to replace existing Exhibit F with a revised Exhibit F that makes those two changes. The second request is that pursuant to having some guidelines in the influence area, we have created an additional map that we have provided to Munich cap that they can use in their analysis, where we set forth similar guidelines to the ones that exist in Exhibit G for inside the first three blocks to the four to six block influence area. So that map identifies the levels of development that we were looking for inside the influence area as well. That map would be included or added to the end of Exhibit G. Those are the two amendments that the Lot Department is requesting.
Thank you. And in your opinion, did you, did you experienced anything of concern in the initial findings report we discussed this morning?
Uh, no, Councilman, I think it's, the initial analysis, the initial forecast that Munich cap has performed to date has been consistent with what we believe would be accurate for projection of revenues, and it's also been incredibly detailed and very thoughtfully conducted by Munich cap. We've answered a lot of questions, we've provided them a great deal of information, they are continuing to review that information and conduct additional research, but it is been a very detailed process that we've been very pleased with.
And I know Councilmember, Councilmember Johnson has some questions about how the final report will come about and what might be included in that, but give me that timeframe again, when will we have the final report?
Well, we will need to have a final report before we proceed with any attempt to do any bond documentation, because this is a report that we will need in order to assemble any bond documents. So without speaking specifically for Munich cap, I would imagine that we would have a completion of Phase One, so if you recall, in the contract that the council approved with Munich cap, there are two phases to their work. Phase One is the initial analysis and research phase, which is not yet complete, but I would imagine should be complete in the next several, the next three to four weeks would be my guess, and then after that, Phase Two is the actual written report that Munich cap will produce, which I would imagine would take a few weeks after they complete Phase One.
Okay.
But as we've discussed in all of our briefings today, as we move forward in developing the bond issuance documents and, and all the offering statements that have to go with those bond documents, we will continue to provide information to the council, and will be very detailed in briefing you on how those documents are being prepared and what is going into them, as well as providing the additional information that comes from Munich cap.
Yes, and I think you understand, because I think every councilmember has been quite forthright in their opinion that we will have all those things available to us well in advance of any kind of vote to approve or not approve a streetcar.
Most definitely, and that level of detailed information, as I discussed with several of you today, is something that's going to absolutely be required in those bond documents, because we're not going to be able to sell any bonds without that level of detail.
And that final step is most likely September, October, possibly later?
Early November, yes. So we, we've still got some time.
All right. Thank you, I'll have a couple more questions for you on, related to that, on item number 75, but the last question we discussed this morning, I wanted to just bring up, because it is new since last time, is that in the meantime, in the last week or so, Metro has voted to convert to Regional Transit Authority, and there's a process by which they can do that, and I think they need to do that to enhance public transit in the community and to accomplish all the things they just identified in their public input process and things that the public wants to see in terms of public transit enhancements. But that also means they convert to a elected body in 2024, and so the question I was asking you this morning, and I'll just ask you again this afternoon, was, the Metro, of course, is a major partner in this project. We've already approved some redevelopment agreements with them as, as the entity that does public transit in the city. This particular agreement's with the Omaha Streetcar Authority, but that doesn't lessen the fact that half of the Streetcar Authority is Metro executives, and so my, it's a long way of asking this question, is there risk in 2004 or 2005 or beyond, should leadership change at Metro to anything we're doing here today, or the street, streetcar itself, or could any of these redevelopment agreements be reversed? Should opinions change?
No, so the interlocal agreement that was approved by both this council and by Metro's board is a binding contractual agreement between the two parties. So unless that agreement is terminated pursuant to the provisions of that agreement, it is contractually binding on both parties regardless of how Metro's board changes. Second, the redevelopment agreement that's before you today has already been approved by the Streetcar Authority, so the Streetcar Authority is also bound to the provisions of this agreement, should it be approved today.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
I think I am.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Melton.
Thanks, I, I lost the green from when you took over, thank you. And I, I have some other people that I would like to call up, but Ms. Taylor, if you could just go through, because we continue to talk about bonds, and I think the thing that I hear from people, or that I hear misreported the most, is normally when we're talking about bonds, because we do a lot of bonding for the city, and so we pay for the majority of our capital improvement projects, our road projects, our, our parks, big facilities, but it's always taxpayer-funded bonds. I mean, we, we have a vote, and so people are saying, why don't the people get to vote on this? We were told we got to vote on it, they are bonds, so the taxpayers are still paying for it. These are different bonds, and in fact, I, I don't know that I've ever seen private bonds sold like this, at least in my nine years on council, I can't recall it. These are bonds that are issued and bought by private individuals or funds, or however, whoever is going to buy these bonds. Therefore, it's the investors that are on the hook, and it's not the taxpayers that are paying the bonds. It is the TIF fund that's being paid for by the developers, which is what Munich cap, that Munich cap sheet is. It's how they're describing exactly, there's existing development, and then there's future development, and so that's what they're basing the numbers on. And, and am I correct in everything I'm saying? Do you want to correct anything?
Yes, that is correct. So what will happen is, when these bonds are issued, unlike the bonds that we traditionally utilize to fund city projects, these will be issued to the private market. So, and the sole source of repayment for these bonds are the tax increment financing revenues that are generated through the development that will occur. So the reason the Munich cap analysis is important is because that is what those bond purchasers will be essentially relying upon, so they're not just looking to us, with all due respect to Mr. Curtis and myself, they will not be looking to us to provide an opinion that, yes, these revenues will materialize, they're looking to a third-party financial entity who says, we have evaluated all of the property within the district, we have looked at the projections, and here's what we believe will be the revenue available on an annual basis to repay those bonds to those bondholders that purchased them.
And, and therefore, I mean, it, it's not, and the taxpayers are not on the hook.
And, and to, and to, let me finish, I'll be clear here, too.
Yeah.
So if that revenue does not materialize, the taxpayers in the city are not obligated to make up any shortfalls, there is no recourse to the city. The bondholders are at risk if that revenue does not materialize.
Thank you, and I think that that's one of the most important things, and that's, and we'll, we'll get to that in, in a second, but I have to say, I was upset that I, I wanted to see not just a summary of what Munich cap did, I wanted to see the basis for how they got to where they got. I want to say that, that I was impressed with the explanations that you provided, that Mr. Nadel provided, that Mr. Curtis provided, because they, they are relying a lot upon assumptions of development and how many square feet needs to be developed and what the cost is.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we, we fortunately actually have somebody that deals in commercial real estate here on, on council, and I didn't hear him balking at the, the number that was used, so it sounds to me like it was a conservative number, therefore, if it, what Munich cap is doing is looking at everything from a very conservative standpoint, which is, is good for us and good for the potential bond purchasers, correct?
It is going to make it, I, I would like to say, again, I'll defer to Mr. Curtis if he has any different opinions, but I would imagine that it would make the bonds more attractive to purchasers to know that the assumptions and the revenue projections that have been made have been done so conservatively, because they'll have more comfort that that revenue will actually materialize.
And what happens if the bonds are only partially sold? I mean, let's say we need 365, I don't know, I, I don't remember the exact amount, but let's say only 200 million sell, what happens? I mean, because then, then it's only partially paid for, do we just have a half-built streetcar system, or what happens?
And again, I'll let Mr. Curtis correct me if I'm wrong, or Mr. Meyer Bond Counsel, if he happens to be listening, but in all likelihood, the bond documents will be drafted in such a way that we will not be able to actually sell the full, oh, sell and commence construction of the project without actually fully funding the entire project. If I'm a bond purchaser, I am not going to give you $100 million and buy these bonds if I am not assured that you are actually going to construct the amenity that secures my purchase.
Okay, so, and then, just by chance, if they don't all sell, then there's something in there that the money goes back, so we will have the, we'll have the project, the project will be fully funded by private investors, basically, through private bondholders, and will be fully funded before we start.
Correct. And I will also share with you, this is not the first time we have done a private bond placement through city council, we actually did issue private bonds, privately placed bonds to support the Blackstone Hotel, that secured their enhanced employment area occupation tax financing. So it is something we have, we haven't done it with a great regularity, but we have done before, and our bond counsel is very comfortable with the way that we did it last time and that we can do this again.
Well, it looks like those are working well.
It has worked well.
Hopefully the bond purchasers are happy, I, it's just their...
They are getting paid.
Wonderful. Um, this is a huge project, though, I mean, and then, but, and I guess this, this is where I'm, I had wanted this sooner, but I understand they are working hard, I would rather have it complete. I have some discussions on a future done item, and I'm not going to confuse the two, so I have more questions on the, on the other. But I guess some of the things that I would like to know, just moving forward, would be kind of the current property tax revenue in the district, what we anticipate it changing, and then how much we're, we're getting now. I mean, we've got a lot of development now, and that's not going to change, so we're not going to reduce the amount of property tax that we're collecting from the route as it is. And then as it develops, we'll still make more in sales tax and others, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, I, I think I've asked, too, all the questions on this particular topic, so I appreciate that. And then I had one more person I wanted to call up. Mr. Dobbs, are you still out there, because I can't see you?
Yes.
Would you, would you come up for a moment, since you're here?
Hell, Dobbs, 314 North, 97th Court, Omaha, Nebraska, and I was not dressed or prepared for you to do this.
I, I know, I...
So I didn't come here, and I sure as heck don't want to be on TV in my shorts.
I understand. You're trying to hide...
And I want you to not feel any disrespect for that, I have no idea, I just came to be a mouse on the carpet to sit and watch and hope that things went, went well on this very important project.
I know you did, but it was approximately, a little over five years ago, you and I were invited to a debate at the Mason's, there's at least 120 people there, and you and I debated each other on the streetcar. And when I showed up, you had a whole table filled with props and a streetcar, do you remember that? You're a little, do you still have that? You put it in your living room? You have this streetcar with buildings?
You might see that again someday.
I'm sure I will. Of course, I have no props, I, I show up, I'm just coming to debate, his table looks beautiful, but, Mr. Dobbs, you were a proponent of the streetcar five years ago, and I was an opponent. One of the main reasons was I was against a taxpayer-funded streetcar that I think could potentially strap the taxpayers and hurt future needs of the city that are, go well beyond any need for a streetcar. But you've always maintained support for the streetcar, and I, I just wanted to get your opinion and your thoughts on how we're funding it this way, as opposed to with taxpayers.
First of all, humorous response to that, to begin with, and that is, everybody that I know that's ever run for mayor has been opposed to it when they ran for mayor, and then they've been in favor of it after they got elected to be mayor. So I, just as a political overtone to some of this, just for you to smile a little bit about that, but this is, this is what TIF was meant for, and with no disrespect to other uses of TIF, this is public infrastructure. It's like a park, and it may not necessarily generate any direct revenue, a park doesn't. So the TIF is not going, in this case, to a private for-profit company or a private non-for-profit bottom line. This is infrastructure development. When it increases the value of that property and the property in the TIF zone, that benefits every taxpayer in Douglas County, because when valuations go up, it keeps the rate per $100 assessed valuation lower or contained or down, so it benefits every taxpayer, because it is public infrastructure, and it's not going to some other entity to relieve them of 10% of their borrowing costs at the bank.
Right.
So I, I like this plan, it looks like one I saw 20 years ago, with respect to the idea of financing this kind of growth, so I couldn't be more excited about the two agenda items, 71 and 75, on your, your agenda today, and the potential you have today of striking a, a major, major future change to what our city will look like and can look like with this very serious effort, a very thorough and well-considered effort, and one that is being more than properly financed with very little risk to the bondholders, and we've used, we've done bonds like this on many other things, revenue bonds that non, not, not for a vote of the people.
The private bonds, yeah.
The private bonds, and they all work very well, they're always very conservatively organized, because the bondholder's not going to buy them otherwise.
Right.
So I, I think in this case, from everything I know, that if you take these steps today, you chart a new course for the city of Omaha, that's going to be amazing.
Well, I want to thank you, and although I, I won the debate, by the way, five years ago, I got more claps than he did, but I...
I thought you might say that.
You know what, five years later, we've had a lot of discussions about this.
All good things come in time.
That's right. We've had a lot of discussions about this.
Well, thank you for...
And I was never against it. And I was never against the streetcar. I was against how we paid for it and what it would cost the taxpayers. I mean, that was always my biggest concern. And so, I think I've come a long way in seeing the value and the benefit.
Well, we didn't have restaurant tax in those early days, and some other sources of revenue and base broadening has occurred here in the city as, as our city has grown. But I think that should give you, as council members, a lot more comfort today than I could admit you would have had five or 10 or 15 years ago. I think, I think things are, it's a much more useful and constructive step for the city to take with, on a sounder footing.
Well, I want, I want to thank you, and thank you for the continued discussions over the last five years and the back and forth that we've had.
You sound like you've changed your mind, Councilman.
Well, based upon the funding mechanism, I still wish I had more detail.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dobbs. And, Mr. Naughtle, I just have just a couple of questions for you.
We'll have to see who won that debate this time.
Now, I'm moving over to the other side. Sometimes that happens.
Jay Naughtle, 2285 South 67th Street in Exarban Village, on behalf of the Omaha Streetcar Authority.
And Jay, I just had a couple of questions for you. And I think what came out and what a lot of people keep quoting is, there was somebody that criticized the, the streetcars, said it wasn't good for Omaha, and their entire focus was on transit. And I think even what Mr. Dobbs was saying and what we're looking at when we're talking about tax increment financing, and we're talking about infrastructure improvements, I don't see the streetcar as transit necessarily. I mean, it's moving people. But how do you see the streetcar? I mean, in all honesty, the way we're funding it, not one person could ride the streetcar, but it still wouldn't cost the taxpayers any more money. I mean, am I incorrect in that statement?
No, you're not incorrect, and, you know, the real premise is economic development and its talent and its jobs. That's what the city needs, that's what the region needs, and this is a modern tool that is infrastructure, that is, has been used in many communities throughout the country that had similar goals. And so, our focus has been economic development. Certainly, we need to move people, but the first thing we need to do is get the people here. And in order to get the people here and to attract the jobs, we've got to be a community that's more, more urban, more full-service, if you will, and a community that can meet the needs of a broader group of individuals and businesses. So, that's where we start. That's the premise.
And I think you, you've looked at, well, at least I know you've looked at HDR, and I think we reviewed at least the initial findings from Munich cap, where it looks like Munich cap has based, at least our review, is at $140 per square foot is the cost of development. That's an average, I think, from multiple different...
Yeah, it's, so to kind of walk you through that a little bit, what was done is that information on existing development and development potential within, I'm going to say, 43 districts within the three-block area was provided to Munich cap, and then there were, I think, another 21 or 22 districts in the influence area outside, so blocks four through six. So, when you add it up, approximately 63 districts were studied, and information was put together based on what's there, how dense it is, what use it is, and then what the potential for new development and the various uses and densities were matched up with that for all 63, approximately 63 of these districts or zones.
Right, and do you mind if I hand this to you?
Sure.
Because it's Exhibit G, and you're kind of referring to it, so for people watching, it might be helpful.
That assumes I know how to work this technology.
I have another question for you, and it would be helpful if you had that up. Thank you.
Okay. Can you all see it yet? No. I never said I was good at technology. Okay, but it's too...
How do we, how do we, can you make it smaller? Here. Well, that'll work. I mean, that shows us kind of enough. So, what, and it looks like, what the projections are, is that we need, or they're anticipating or basing this on 6.3 million square feet of new development at an initial assessed value of $140 per square foot. Now, to me, I looked at that, and I said, 6.3 million square feet. Like, it's hard for me to conceptualize, conceptualize that, and then my very first question is, well, how much is already developed? Like, do we even have 6.3 million square feet to develop along that route? But then, so the question, or at least the answer to that was, they actually, that was, their assumption was only 15%. 6.3 million equals 15% of what could be developed, and is that correct?
That is correct, but a point of clarification here, when, when we talk about square footage, realize that this is, this is all consolidated. And so, it's not just square footage of office buildings or retail spaces, it includes the square footage of any kind of residential or hotel, really anything that would be built on those blocks. And so, you know, when you, when you think about 6.3 million square feet, it's a big, big number of square feet.
But that's total in this whole district, right?
But there's a, there's a very large area that this would get developed in, and it includes measuring an apartment building in square feet, or enclosed parking structures that are under an apartment building in square feet. And so, you, you add up to 6.3 million square feet much quicker than you might.
I see.
Or would otherwise if it was different uses. If this was 6.3 million square feet of office space, this is going to be a long meeting. That's just not the case. So, it's all kinds of uses combined, which then results in this averaged assessed value of $140 a square foot. That's a low number, in my opinion, which is good. It's conservative here. I think it's a very low number, actually, and that's the right, that's the right place to be. We don't want it to be aggressively high. We want it to be conservatively low, and Munich cap came to that on their own. So, that $140 a square foot number includes all these other kinds of spaces thrown into the mix, and when you divide the value by 6.3 million square feet, you get that number. Does that, did that make sense?
But yeah, but I, also, what I was surprised about was the conservative amount that, that would need to be developed to hit that 6.3, that it's only, and when I, 15, like 1-5 for people that can't hear very well, 15%.
Yeah, that's correct.
I wanted to make sure that was clear because that's, to me, that seemed very conservative as well.
I agree. I think we all agree. And it's, it's not just 15% in the, in the streetcar zone, it's also only 15% in the influence zone around it. So, while this is a big number, 6.3 million square feet, there's a potential for much, much more than that. And in fact, when we look at other communities and what's happening in other communities, they're far exceeding, they're similar projections. Now, every community's different, so I can't tell you what the individual communities projected, but I can tell you that they're beating their numbers quite a bit.
And then, I had just one other question, although I still, again, I still wish that we had what it was to back it up. You're on the streetcar authority.
Correct.
And so, again, this doesn't get built until we vote for the bonds.
No, it doesn't get built till the proceeds from bond sales that have been received are sufficient enough to fund the project. So, even though you may have voted to approve the offering of the bonds, the sale of the bonds, unless sufficient proceeds are received from the sale of bonds, the project can't go forward. And, and to pick up on a point that was mentioned earlier, these bonds are, they're, they're unique for a project, for Omaha, for a project like this. They're not unique out there in the world. There, there is a limited pool of very active buyers of bonds like this that understand tax increment-backed bonds. The feedback we got early on as a working group was that in order to sell those kinds of bonds, certainly you need, you need a bond attorney, you need, in this case, Q-TAC, and you need DA Davidson or a firm like that to sell the bonds, but more importantly, or of equal importance, you need an opinion from a Munich cap about these specific kinds of bonds. So, all three of those components have to go together, all three of those firms have to work together, assuming the city chooses to go forward with all three of those firms. And this, these bond documents will be very carefully crafted, and there isn't anyone out there, I don't believe, that would buy any of these bonds without a high level of certainty that dollars won't be spent unless there is certainty that all the funds required to complete the project and operate the project are in place.
Well, and one of my, I wanted to lay this over, but I understand the delay could affect the bonds and with the interest rates and things the way they are, I would rather, I would rather not delay this anymore. Inflation and building costs and all those things that could impact everything that we're doing, I don't want to delay it, but I guess where I feel more comfortable is that Munich cap gave us the summary, and they're going to give us documents that support it. And by the way, if they don't, then the bonds won't sell, so it won't happen. So, I guess I feel a little more comfortable at this point because of the fact that the bonds aren't going to sell unless they, they have the accurate information that I'm looking for to back up what I'm being told.
I, that's accurate. A delay right now, in fact, so, a layover, if you will, for Item 71 is, the consequences of that are different than a layover for Items, the Item 75 later on the agenda. This item really requires approval today so that the division of taxes can take place at the end of July. It's really, really important. This doesn't work if the division of taxes doesn't take place. We're, we'd have to...
And explain that, explain that to me, because in fact, if somebody asked me right now, I don't know if I'd be able to explain it.
I think I would defer to...
Okay, you want to defer that to Ms. Taylor?
Yes, I think I probably do. She can give you a better explanation. I understand it, but she can give you a better explanation. But let me just say this, the division of taxes is what's critical to take place next, assuming an approval of this today. The other agenda item, which I think we'll get to in a few minutes, has other consequences if it is delayed. So, they're, they're different.
All right, thank you. That's all, I appreciate it.
Sure.
Ms. Taylor? You know, these, and I know we're taking a lot of time, but these are the questions that I don't think necessarily are getting covered by the news because they cover everything, you know, you got to cover everything in about 60 seconds, and they, they just aren't getting covered. So, I hear people talking and having the same questions and the same statements, so I just want to make sure all this information is kind of provided in some detail so that it's reported correctly so that everybody at least understands it, whether they agree or not. I just want people to be making their decisions based upon the facts and not snippets of information or editorials sent by people from California. So, if you could, just tell me why it's so important that we vote on this today and not lay it over any longer.
Jennifer Taylor, City Law Department. And just to be clear, although I'm sure that none of you want to stay here for hours on end, but I am happy to stay here and answer questions as long as, as you have them and to provide the information that you would like to have, so. But to answer that question, the division of taxes, state law requires that if we are going to divide taxes, we provide notice to the county by August 1st. So, if we want to divide taxes for 2022, we have to give notice by August 1st. That division date is what is being used by Munich cap and has been used by us in our financial analysis to start generating the necessary revenues that we need. So, I have to send those notices by August 1st. If not, we lose a whole year of tax revenue.
But that's for, that's the tax, the tax increment financing...
Financing, yes.
Revenue, so it's not, it's tax increment financing revenue, because what you're doing is, where, right now, where is it going? I mean, because you said you're dividing it, so that's because now you're going to have it start going into the, the district, the streetcar district?
Correct. So, if we don't have, if I don't send notices to divide taxes, that lets the county assessor know that I, that I'm seeking to divide taxes on those parcels. If I don't send it by August 1st, I lose an entire year of tax revenue. And so, and not only do I lose an entire year of tax revenue, but also I lose the value of property that will continue to increase because of the announcement that we've made. So, the project that we've put out there into the public, people are speculating, people are purchasing property, those revenues, those assessed values are already starting to increase. If I don't divide taxes, if I don't send notice of division of taxes by August 1st, I lose that.
But this doesn't affect taxpayers in any way?
No.
And it doesn't affect the city's property tax revenues that we're getting in. This literally just has to do with which pot the money is going into, but it has no impact on the taxpayers of Omaha, we're not paying more money for anything.
Correct. And, and as I said a couple of weeks ago as well, and I want to reiterate again, I have to send by state law a notice to the county by August 1st of my intent to divide taxes. After August 1st, if we decide not to proceed, I can withdraw that notice, and, and that's fine. I cannot, however, submit that notice after August 1st.
That was going to be my very last question. So, at this time, we could withdraw it if you wanted to, and if this doesn't, if for some reason something happens, things don't come out as it is, the bonds don't sell, then none of these agreements, the streetcar authority can't move forward, it all has to get funded with the bonds, and then the bonds have to be purchased.
Correct. We can still stop this process, we can still undo this process. I cannot restart this process.
Right, right, and August 1st is an important date for that.
It is.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
And thank you for the time. I have no further questions.
Thank you. Mr. Harden, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to first start out by, Ms. Taylor referenced an amendment. So, I, I'm going to start out by putting an amendment out there, hopefully getting a second, then we can take that up after everyone else's comments are done. But as, as Ms. Taylor explained, the redevelopment agreement needs to be amended so that we can revise Exhibit F and clarify that the excess tax revenues generated in years 15 through 20 are allocated entirely to the city redevelopment note and the district TIF, and the existing TIF provision shall apply for blocks one through six. I think there was some, not disparity, but there was some need for clarification as, as requested by Munich cap. So, and then also, the map identifying the development goals for the influence area needs to be added to the end of what's Exhibit G. So, so the amendment would include, one, the Exhibit F is deleted in its entirety and replaced with Exhibit F, which amended, and that, number two, the map identifying the development goals for the influence area shall be inserted at the end of Exhibit G.
Motion in a second for the floor amendment? The floor is still yours, right?
Yes, please. Couple, couple of things. One, I'll touch on the, I told a couple of people a story today and had said something about it on a radio interview the other week. We have been talking about something like this for quite some time. As a matter of fact, Jeff Keterba, who I still think is a talent to Omaha, that I, I know, I miss seeing his work in the Omaha World-Herald every day, and, but, but years ago, there was, I got to say, it was probably, it had to be late 1990s when we were talking about a streetcar and Hal Dobbs was mayor, and how Jeff had depicted Hal basically as Mr. Rogers and had, you know, kind of a trolley running across the, the front of the semicircle here, and, and below it were, you know, the council members at the time, like Subien Zaldo and Frank Christensen and Lor Monglo and Richard Tocchetti, and it's interesting, we, we have been talking about a lot of those.
The B. Kerry Livers.
Yeah, so, you haven't been called on, so you're out, or, I've always wanted to say that to him. Anyway, so we, we talked about... Anyway, so we talked about these kind of projects and in a similar fashion, you know, we talked a lot about, how many times did we do a study on a new arena and convention center for Omaha? And we kept doing studies and putting them up on the shelf and collecting dust, and we finally pulled the trigger and I would tell you that there's probably, you know, most people, in a backhanded way, it's a compliment, that we don't even think twice about going to see a Creighton basketball game at the CHI Center or going to see a concert or even see, would that help spur with what's now the Charles Schwab Field and the just recently College World Series? So I'll go into this, and I was never very good in my English class, and I always got metaphors and analogies mixed up, but I think I'll be correct in saying, since I'm going to use the word like, it's going to be an analogy. And I really think this is like kind of a moonshot, that we had, we had a project take off, we send it around the earth a couple of times in orbit for a couple of reasons. One is to gain that momentum, to get it into its final orbit so that it can break out of the earth's atmosphere. But also along the way, we're analyzing all the information, and we keep getting more and more information as we make that final decision to send, send the space capsule out of our orbit and onto the moon. And so I think this is a little bit like something like that. And yes, we are waiting for more information, but you look at all the questions that we have been asking as a body, both publicly and in our briefings, we're doing, we're doing that due diligence on behalf of the citizens of Omaha, because we want to make sure that when that final decision is made, all that information has been properly analyzed, both, you know, the, you know, financial information as well as the economic information. And I, and I think that that's the process we're going through. Yes, we would like more information sooner, but as we are on this journey, we keep finding out more information and we keep asking those questions, but we're doing that on behalf of the citizens of Omaha so that we can make an informed decision. And you know what? If we're getting ready in that last orbit to make that decision to go, and we get information that says this isn't going to be feasible, then we make that decision. But we, I think we need to stay on this process or on this journey so that we can be in a position to help Omaha move further ahead. I like the comments too about, you know, this really is, it's a, this is what TIF was made for. TIF was made for economic development, and it's, you can, you know, I would say this is an economic development project before it's a transit project. And that's why, you know, some of the comments that were made in the paper from someone who had some Omaha ties but lives in California, they were really looking at, trying to make the case that this doesn't work because it was, he was trying to make it as a transit project, but really this is an economic development project. Then I think finally, as it relates to Munich cap, when, in our 10:30 meeting today and in a briefing later on too, I had asked finance and law, I said, you know, it was, now that we have a preliminary report from Munich cap saying that, you know, this, after our analysis, and I got to say, so the way that this was analyzed, the 60 some odd within the, both the 1 to 3 block area of influence and the 4 to 6, was, and Steve Jensen's in the back of the room, I mean, this was micro-targeted, if you will. I mean, it was, it was block by block, what exists today, what could possibly exist tomorrow, and that was all part of Munich cap's analysis. But what I found interesting, what I asked earlier today was, the reason we went to ask Munich cap to take a look at this, I mean, there were a couple of reasons, but one, so we had, we had a, we had an opinion by HDR to say, this is what we think the numbers would be, this is what we would think would be generated by TIF within these areas. And then Munich cap was engaged for a couple of reasons. One, obviously for, for an opinion that we could attach to and hopefully make more marketable financial investments, being the bonds, to those investors, but also to, if you will, verify what the, what the numbers were that HDR came up with. And I, before seeing, you know, having that side by side comparison, I said, you know, to some degree, I'd like to see that there's a difference of opinion, that maybe HDR said, this is what we think will be generated from this area, and Munich cap might say, you know what, you underestimated there, but you overestimated here, but the numbers still come out basically the same, or in the same ballpark, certainly. And that's exactly kind of what's, what's happened, is that, so we've, we've really had two, one, I'll say not independent group put a set of numbers together, but then an independent group analyzing the information using different metrics and comes up with basically the same number, which gives me hope that as that orbit goes around, we're answering some of those questions. And when Munich cap has their final report, obviously there will be some tweaks to it, but I'm anticipating, or I'm hoping that, that those are, that those numbers don't change so dramatically that it changes the direction of the orbit we're going in. I think that's it for now, but I, I really think that this is something that the city of Omaha, we, we need to continue to look at this opportunity. And there will be points of time where we can jump off before that final decision is made, but I think we need to stay on this journey.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's already been stated over and over again that this is definitely an economic opportunity for the city of Omaha. So with that being said, I would like to talk a little bit about mutual and the support that I have regarding this notion for streetcars. I think that it is very, very effective in terms of providing the transportation, if you will, throughout the urban core. But I was very, my concern, my overall concern with this is that I, I feel as though Omaha has been very lacking in providing public transportation as a whole, and this is an opportunity to look at fulfilling that hole or that gap that we have as it relates to public transportation going north and south. And so at this time, Ms. Taylor, if you could, please elaborate on the city's commitment to extend Munich cap's scope of work to add additional nodes that allows public transportation going north to south to the proposed streetcar route.
Good afternoon, Jennifer Taylor, City Law Department. Per our conversation this morning, I will continue to, and I hereby make a commitment to you and this council, that I will request that Munich cap evaluate and present us a proposal to expand their scope to determine how we could proceed with funding a north-south route that would go as a phase two from this particular project. In addition to that, as we discussed, I can represent the city's commitment that we will work with the streetcar authority and the consultant that they have retained to seek advice and pursue federal funding for that phase two, as well as additional ways that we can not only expand the line, but then find other ways to fund it as well and do so as soon as possible.
Okay, would you say that they would be able to conclude on that scope of work before our December 1st deadline where we can decide to jump off the train?
I would imagine that Munich cap could at least identify for us what that scope would look like and present it to you before then, yes, without speaking on their behalf, but that seems reasonable.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Plerner, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's good that we have conversation about something so important in our city, regardless of how you feel about it. To sum it up, and I do have questions, but you can take a break. To sum it up, I mean, it's truly now or never, right? We can continue to say, well, back in the 90s or back in 2020s, it's now or never to move forward with this. And we've all received the emails, people that are for it, people that are against it, people that say, well, we're not going to ride it. Well, some people aren't. Some people are still going to be relying on their vehicle, and that's fine. This is for economic development along this corridor. When we talk about attracting, retaining talent, jobs, this is certainly something our city desperately needs. Long before I got on the council, I visited many cities with the streetcar and always thought, what would Omaha look like one with a streetcar? How would Omaha look with a streetcar? And you can open up the wish list of what it brings to the city. One thing I always know we're lacking, and you've heard it before, but major professional sports team, this is how you keep people in the city, this is how you get people to and from. But again, those who don't want to ride it, don't ride it. It will still succeed with this information we have, and it truly will move our city forward. But it doesn't mean that's exactly how I felt when I first seen the magic wand waving within different apartments of the city when this was proposed. And as I tell my chief of staff almost daily when he unlocks my key card to let me in the building, there's, there's never a dull moment, and there's not. Who would have ever thought, at least I didn't think I would see an ordinance to approve this for a streetcar on our agenda. I just, I really didn't. We've talked about it a lot. I know I've been to many community meetings long before where Jay Lund, who's not here, would stand up on the stage, and I thought for sure he needed that protective wiring across the front because people were not happy with what he had to say. And he believed in it, and he's seen it through as well. And here we are. But when I initially heard this, the first thing I thought was, well, there's a win for the developers, no doubt. It's certainly a gamble for the city, and as we just heard, what about north and south Omaha? Because we know what's lacking is that, that corridor to get people to and from work, to and from their jobs, healthcare, whatever there is. But I also know you have to start somewhere, and this is one of those corridors that once it's started, it will work, especially where it sits to get us to some of them attractions in the urban core. And I can't believe it took me that long to say urban core, because if you heard me talk, it's usually about the urban core. The way our urban core goes is the way our city goes. Those of you that aren't looking forward, we are running out of land. And if we don't continue to invest in the urban core, it's just, our city's going to fail, and that's just what it is. So yeah, the developers still get a win now, it's a more calculated risk, and north and south Omaha finally has something to look forward to. We know that these streetcar lines usually are federally funded, unless we can figure out a way to pay for them, in which we did in this particular instance with the forecast we've seen. So I know we will have a north and south line that we've had numerous department heads, staff members within the city say on the record that we're going to look forward to moving forward with. But let's not forget, the streetcar is in front of us today because of a new skyscraper from Lanahaw Development that at some point will be developed and built downtown. Without mentioning the mutual building, there would be no mention of the streetcar. The streetcar brings so much more than just the mutual building, though, I will say that. We've, we've heard TIF mentioned a few times, and it's true, this is what TIF was designed for, but let's keep in mind, it's not paying for this entire project. It's the extremely blighted definition that is paying for this project. Well, again, there's those that will buy the bonds that will pay for this project. So yes, TIF's important, and that's what it's designed for, and sure will capture it, but it's that extremely blighted definition of TIF that we'll use to pay for this. And with that, Ms. Taylor, if you could, I do have a couple of questions for you now.
Jennifer Taylor, City Law Department.
So depending on who you talk to, there are a couple of people that say, well, extremely blighted should go away, or it shouldn't be used for this, and now that you know and I know, based on what the forecast we received yesterday says, the way we pay for this is for that final five years, which would be the extremely blighted. With today's vote, how would, how, could that change with something decided down in Lincoln to change extremely blighted?
No. The extremely blighted definition and designation that we have placed on certain areas in the city cannot be retroactively undone by future legislation at the state, at the state level. So for areas that have been designated as extremely blighted pursuant to state law, they will remain that way. So that's, that tool is available regardless, we can't go back and undo what has been done.
Okay.
It would prevent us from, if there were to be a change at the state level, it would prevent us from designating new areas, but those existing designations would not be undone.
Okay. So this, this, streetcar proposed corridor of the 40 some districts within there would be locked in to receive this funding to help pay for the streetcar?
Correct.
Okay, well, that's good to know. And as I mentioned, the bond part of this, there's, there's a way we pay for it, and it is truly from selling of these bonds. We were given the information just yesterday, although we kind of had some ideas on where it would be, and of course, for me, I knew how important it was to move this forward. To those, and maybe this isn't the fairest question, but to those who have to have this on their radar as potential bond buyers, have they been made aware of the Munich cap results that we've seen?
Well, and again, those, those results are the, these are an initial forecast from Munich cap, it has not been finalized, but we will start, presuming we can move forward from today, we will start to engage DA Davidson, to have conversations with them about how we would structure those bond issuances. They will work with their desk that sells these bonds to start giving us, giving us some guidance on how we would put those documents together. So going forward from today, yes, we will start to engage those entities.
Good, because that's, that's the most important part, right? We got to find somebody to pay for this. Again, it's now or never, it's now or never in our urban core, and I believe this truly is something that will not only set us apart, but put us on the map as the city of Omaha to bring some of them things that we know, because don't get me wrong, Omaha's in a great place, but we have in front of us something to make it even better. So I want to thank everybody for all their work that they put in on this. As I said, I'm not quite sure how staff put all this together, and I know they were constantly on the phone with others trying to put this together, but I believe you did, and I believe we're, where we need to be. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rowe, you're recognized.
Thank you, Ms. Chris. I too agree with Mr. Pleneron, what all he's said, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. I never thought I would be doing as much study of streetcars in my life as I have in the last few months, and I've learned a lot and done a lot of travel to try to understand how it, how it works. And the other thing, I tend to be fairly conservative in nature, and I appreciate the conservative approach that we've taken as far as the valuation. And I was going to ask Jay Klein before he left if I could buy an apartment for $147 a square foot. Now, but maybe, I don't even know if Meredith could get an apartment for me for $147 a square foot, so those are conservative numbers, and at 15, and then 15% of the district, I mean, I think the numbers are going to work well, and I work well, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Begley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. You can sit down and relax a little bit for now, Jennifer. Great discussion today. I want to thank my colleagues for their comments, because it's good to sometimes go last and listen to them. I'm not going to cover a lot of what was already said, but I think, and my colleague Amy Melton brought Hal Dobb up, and you don't have to come up, Mr. Dobb, but I, when I saw you sitting out there, I thought back to the late 90s, I think it was, when, I always think of 3D chess. When people play 3D chess, they're eight steps ahead. And when you were mayor, you talked about getting the streetcar, and it didn't happen. But you think of the things that did happen. You have the CHI Center, and I think you put an anchor hotel when that started, if I remember correctly. And that is a backbone of what started everything that built up to where we're at today. You have Charles Schwab's there now, CHI Center, Millworks, Leahy Mall, Mutual coming downtown if everything goes as planned, Gallup to the northeast up there, and everything in between. So when I talk about 3D chess, the streetcar now, as we're talking about here right now today, is a backbone. And my, two of my colleagues to my right in North and South Omaha that they passionately represent, if they had their way, the streetcar, if this goes forward, it would be going into North and South Omaha. But I think back to the 3D chess that Mayor Dobb at the time was playing, and others that came after him and that are here today, that we're going through our fiduciary responsibility on this, and we've been briefed and briefed and overloaded, and we pull back, and we talk amongst ourselves, we talk to staff, talk to constituents, and it really is a process. We're talking about a free-riding streetcar that will move people. Councilman Palermo, I believe, mentioned development, jobs, and retention of talent. That's what we're talking about here. And getting people from, if Project Next takes place on the west end of where the streetcar is designed to go, down to Mutual and everything downtown and in between. So as we go forward on this, we will keep asking the questions, getting the financial analysis done, but as a son of a history teacher, history's, you think back where we were 10, 20, 30 years ago. In HDR, sitting right in this room, I think Mr. Noddle was here and some HDR folks, and on the big screen in front of us, they showed images of Omaha looking from Council Bluffs to the west, what it looked like 20 years ago, 10 years ago, today, and what it can look like tomorrow. And the 3D thing that I keep going back to, it really is, for Omaha to be a city of the future, to do all those things with economic development, retaining talent, and jobs, jobs, and jobs. We get the backbone here, and we get this right, and we'll keep asking the questions. And North and South Omaha, I really believe, we get through this, and if all the information we kept getting we like, and we flush it out, that Omaha in 30, 40, 50 years, when we look back, that it really is a great process we're going through here. And the fiduciary responsibility that we have, I appreciate the investment of time and the questions that have been asked amongst ourselves again. But I'm looking forward to moving forward with this and that 3D process of how great Omaha can look with how we vote on this today and how we're responsible going forward. I look forward to, it's, the backbone of this is mainly in my district, which is a great thing. It shares Councilmember Johnson's as well. But the zoo on the south, the airport on the north, Ms. Johnson's district in the north, Vinnie's in the south, it's got, you get that backbone in, you know, the CHI Center wasn't built with Millworks and everything else at once. It takes time, and it takes planning, so that, again, that image that they showed, HDR showed the council members, it really is great to see how that looks going forward, and we're prudent on how we get there today. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. There's no further lights. There is a motion and a second to approve the floor amendment. Row caught.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Begley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion, a second, as amended. Row caught.
Harding, Johnson, Melton, Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Begley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you. Without objection, I want to take up number 75 next, before the annexation package, since it's a related item, and we still have all our folks here that just spoke on the previous item. Should there be questions? So, Madam Clerk?
Item 75, a resolution to approve an agreement with the Omaha Development Foundation in an amount not to exceed $3,400,000 for a modern streetcar.
Public hearing on number 75 is today. Proponents, please.
Jay Noddle, 2285 South 67th Street in Exarbor Village, on behalf of the Omaha Streetcar Authority. The purpose of this item today is to get the early due diligence and discovery process for the ultimate route started. We've purposely, we're able to carve out from the interlocal agreement between the city and metro that created the Streetcar Authority, this scope of work. And so there's been an agreement in principle reached between the Omaha Development Foundation and HDR on a scope of services referred to as the 30% drawings. It's a lot more, there's a lot more to it than just drawings. In fact, it's heavily weighted towards discovery and due diligence on the front end of that. So this agreement before you provides assurance to the Omaha Development Foundation that funds would be available from the Parking Enterprise Fund through Public Works and through the city to fund this scope of work. Ultimately, when the bond proceeds, when sufficient bond proceeds are received, that fund will be replenished by whatever had been expended to that date. But the reason we want to start this now is so that we can get into the right-of-way and understand what's below the surface. Public Works always has a really good idea of what's there, but it's not a, it's not 100% accurate, and these rights-of-way have been in place a lot longer than anyone in the room. So work needs to be done below the surface to investigate what's there. Survey work needs to be done, and other organizational things need to be done. In reality, this is a contract not to exceed $3.4 million. It's billed at an hourly rate, and as a practical matter, if you're so inclined and you approve this today, and the work can start very soon, we're not going to be, HDR is not going to be all that far down the road or down the line, as the case may be, before we get to the point where we understand what kind of bond proceeds are available. So there's truly an off-ramp. It's work that would need to be done anyway, and quite honestly, there is enough going on in the corridor now that will result in requests to work in the right-of-way, for the utility companies to be working in the right-of-way, and developers to be doing things either adjacent to or in the right-of-way. Makes a lot of sense to get started. So that, in a nutshell, is why this is before you today. Would we like it to be after the fact, after the bond proceeds are in hand? Certainly we would, but we don't have the luxury of that kind of time. We really do need to get started. So with that, I'm here, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Other proponents today?
Hal Dobb, 314 North 97th Court. On this point, members of the council, if you look at, go back in history to Osarco, and the work, the preliminary work had to get done on the pollution in the land there, and the engineering work had to get done. Now you could add 50,000 square feet to the current auditorium, because the plumbing work got done. And so when you do this, I think Councilwoman Johnson talked about this connector, Councilman Begley talked about the hub or the rib. This 3.2 miles has other potential that needs to be looked at in terms of what's underground at the beginning and the end of this, so that you can do a connector to the airport, do a connector to Council Bluffs when that new bridge gets built, or do a connector to 16th or 24th or 30th Street, and a connector on 24th Street going south. And there's some connection work that will inform you between now and the end of the year on some of the other things that you have to do. So I really want to support this particular item as a head start in keeping this train on the tracks.
Other proponents, please.
Louis C. Menace, 2709 Dewey Avenue. I want to support this because we need some serious changes in transportation here in Omaha. So as a matter, as a matter of initiating something like that, you know, I don't know the details and the guarantees, but knowing that there could be something different is exciting to me. And on the concept that Mr. Harding was talking about, about going around and around to escape the atmosphere, you do something like that to escape gravity. Just to your point, it's a good point, but you want to escape gravity when you go around and around. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Seeing none, public hearings closed. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jay, if I could have you come back up, I think one of the things, and I hope I'm not stealing your thunder, Amy, but I was going to talk about, so the amount that we see in this resolution is a not-to-exceed number. And as we have discussed and have been told, that because it's a not-to-exceed number, that, and that work might start now, but the only time we get to that not-to-exceed number is if we know we have a project going forward. So you mentioned something a little while ago about having the off-ramp on this particular item, and that that would certainly, work that would be done in the interim and to that point, would be the only obligation of the city to that, for that amount. It would not be for the full 3.4, correct?
Jay Noddle. Yes, that's correct.
Could you, and in ballpark figures, if, if we were to get into the end of the summer, we'd probably be certainly less than a million?
Yes. You know, the intended timeframe for this scope of work, for the total scope of work, was nine to 12 months. Could you push and get it done a little bit sooner, maybe? Is it likely it would take a little bit longer? That's probably more likely. So I don't believe that the work, and therefore the billing and financial exposure will happen in 12 equal monthly increments. It'll start slow, and it'll get honestly more expensive as we get towards the tail end of the scope of work. The first things that need to happen are the things I mentioned earlier. That's investigatory work. It's really not designed. But there are things like, where does this go? Where does the streetcar actually go? What lane does it go in? What happens with street parking? How do we deal with intersections? Where are the, where are the stops along the route? What are we going to do to interface with bikes and all those kinds of things? We've got to kind of put all that, or they have to put all that on one map, so to speak, along with the utility condition below grade, before we can get into the real heavy lifting. So if I, I can just say this, the Public Works Department and the Streetcar Authority are going to be all over this like hawks, with, the Streetcar Authority has made arrangements for a consultant to join us and help lead us through this early part of the project.
Paid for by the chamber.
Paid for by the chamber, through the generosity of the chamber. And so there's a lot of eyes on this, and we'll be watching carefully. We're going to know what the status of a final Munichap report is. We're going to be aware of what Bond Council and DA Davidson have to say. I mean, this is a full-time job for a lot of people, albeit volunteer time or otherwise, doesn't really matter. There's an awful lot of eyes on this, and it's super important. There's nothing that I've worked on, certainly community-wide or wise, for the, for our area that's any more important than this, and we've got to get it right. So we're going to be watching.
Yeah, and some of this information that would be discovered through that due diligence process, which we would then own, even if we didn't go forward, as you've mentioned, and Mr. Dobb also touched on, is valuable information as it relates to confirming what we have, you know, in those intersections underneath those right-aways, and that's useful information we can have for other projects going forward as well.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Mr. Curtis, I just wanted to confirm with you for the people, this is being paid for, is this being paid for out of the Enterprise Fund or basically our parking fund?
Steve Curtis, City Finance. Yeah, it is the Enterprise Fund that is fee-based.
And those, those revenues actually come from the parking garage, garages that we have across the city?
Parking garages, meters, and some hooding that we do, and some other minor sources, but primarily parking garages and meters.
Okay, and so this isn't coming out of our general fund that we could otherwise use to do street improvements or something else?
That's correct.
And in fact, the Enterprise Fund by law can only be used for basically, I mean, transportation, parking, transportation. Is that right?
Yes.
So this would fall into that, because regardless of whether the information's used for the streetcar, it's about basically what's under our roads. Is that right?
Right. It's furthering the mobility, which is part of that function.
Now, I know the one thing that the council has asked for, and we haven't gotten, and I just hope we will get, is a more detailed, and I would just like more detail in regards to the Enterprise Fund, which that has nothing to do with this today. It has to do with how we pay for the maintenance of the streetcar moving forward after it's built. And so those are things that I would like to see. It kind of connects with this, with this agenda item, just because it's coming out of the same fund. But I'm hoping that's something that you'll be able to get to all of us in the near future.
Yeah, we provided some, I guess what the parking and mobility funds, operating thoughts are for the next 20, 30 years. I'm not sure if it was enough detail, so what we've agreed to do is work with the council to maybe have some other meetings where we could talk about details that we could flesh out a little better.
Okay. Yeah, because I'd like a report, too, of the past, you know, kind of like the last five years. What have the revenues been? Why? What have we taken on? So then you can kind of look at where we're going. I don't want to just look at current and the future. I always like to look at kind of the past, too, at least the past couple of years.
Yeah, no, that's, that's our intention, is to sit down with everybody and talk about what information, other information we can provide related to parking.
And then, once, if the streetcar bonds are fully purchased, then this fund will get paid back?
That's correct.
For the full amount?
Yes.
Okay. I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Begley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. In pre-council, we talked about this item, and the importance of it, obviously, is you're potheauling down to find gas, water, sewer, communication, finding out what's abandoned. So there's a lot, you know, 100-plus years of infrastructure. That's a purpose of this, you're not Jay, so that's what we talked about. So the importance of this, when, when people out there are listening to this or trying to figure out what we're doing, these are meticulous steps that are taken in identifying where all those underground utilities are, and Jimmy Hoffa, or whatever else is under there. They'll know where it's at ahead of time, so as this gets going forward, those are the important things. I know in my, my other job that I do, underground utilities, especially downtown, are very hard to identify. So I know this is going to be a process that is time-consuming, but good engineering will identify. identify that and will make this easier as the steps go forward as we go through this. Thanks.
Thank you. I would add at this point, not seeing any other lights, that I think what we did, you know, in step, in item number seventy-one, is we took one more step forward, but that did not approve a streetcar. With this item, it is taking one more step also without final approval on anything, but the difference with this one is it does start spending money. The previous one did not. And that may be necessary at this point, as testifiers have observed in terms of preliminary engineering, and that was conceived of in previous agreements the council has approved, that this would need to be a step in terms of thirty percent engineering along the way, and in the way this being, largely in the way this being proposed. This does go to the Omaha Development Foundation, which essentially is the Chamber of Commerce, and so that's not the Streetcar Authority, it's something different. The Streetcar Authority is bound by public process and public bidding, the foundation is not, so I do want folks to know that. I think the reason why it's being done this way initially is because of the HGR contract and continuing that work that has been already conducted with them largely through the chamber and through their hire of an interim director, but it is the intention that all of those decisions and funding move to the Streetcar Authority as quickly as possible, and so we're true to that public process and those open meetings laws that that entity is bound by. And as has been noted, this would allow up to three point four million dollars for this purpose, and is refunded if the bonds are sold, but only if the bonds are sold. If for some reason we aren't proceeding, this is still city funds that are being expended. I don't want that to be lost in this discussion. And it is being paid out of the Parking and Mobility Fund, as has been noted, and I don't doubt there's a reserve there we can tap. But I will say, another one of my frustrations, since this was announced, is we do need to have a bigger conversation and engage the public in a conversation about the Parking and Mobility Fund, because there's a huge change proposed in that area as to how a streetcar would operate should it move to that point. The presumption of eight million dollars in operation funds each year is a big number. I think in many cases, cities have found that the capital part of such a project is the easy part, it's the annual operations that can get real difficult, and you better make sure you get right and better make sure you understand well. As Mr. Curtis noted, we have seen some more detail on that since the announcement, but I will tell you, I've been asking for five months for this information about the Parking and Mobility Fund, and I'm always told it's a work in progress. I'm always told, well, we're going to buy some garages, and we're likely going to increase parking stall fees by four dollars, maybe ten dollars per stall. That's a big increase, folks. And where is that happening? Is that surface lots? Are those employer spots? You know, we need to have that conversation before we get too far down the line here, and I think that part of the initial announcement's been totally lost. And so when I saw this item come up and the proposed source of funding here, I was prepared to lay this over, frankly, to have that conversation in the next three weeks. It sounds to me like the will of the body here is to move forward today, and again, this is just one more step, but, you know, I guess the point I'm making here is, I want that information, I'm not going to ask again until I get it, and I think we need to engage the public on how that's going to work, and it hasn't been done yet. So having said that, I don't think there's any further lights. I understand this is one more step in the process, I understand what it's intended to do, but I feel pretty strongly about that issue, and I wanted to get that on the record. There's a motion?
Second.
And a second to approve? Roll call.
Harding. Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Yes.
Begley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seventy-five is approved, seven to zero. Item seventy-two, an ordinance to annex the OPBD Service Center located at one one zero one North Hundred Eightieth Street, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The vote on number seventy-two is today. Lights or motions? Council members?
Say it.
There's a motion and a second? Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
No.
Rowe.
Yes.
Begley.
abstained.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, five to one, and Councilmember Begley abstains. Item seventy-three, an ordinance to annex Pacific Renaissance located northwest of Hundred Ninety Second and Pacific Streets, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The vote on number seventy-three is today, council members. There's a motion and a second? No further lights? Roll call.
Harding.
Yes.
Johnson. Said a no.
No, you know.
Okay. Melton.
Yes.
Palermo.
No.
Rowe.
Yes.
Begley.
Aye.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seventy-three is approved, five to two. Item seventy-four, an ordinance to annex Methodist Women's Hospital located northeast of Hundred Ninety Second Street and West Dodge Road, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The vote on number seventy-four is today, Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I figured if we went through the first two, it'd feel like we're really moving along here time-wise today. Obviously, I'm against this annexation package. I have been in the past for numerous reasons. This particular package, as we know, doesn't capture any lane miles, I don't believe any parks to mow, but it does gather people, and in this particular, number seventy-four, it gathers a hospital. We do know when there's instances when issues arise at a hospital, not only the people will we capture along with this annexation, they will be required to go to this hospital, maybe for reports, shootings, domestic violence issues, whatever it may be. So it shows not just the people that you are annexing that would spread our resources thin, but also as we take on this hospital itself. And ultimately, I was just going to vote no on this whole entire package, but then there was an article that came out yesterday that somebody had brought to my attention, which certainly, I'm not going to sit here and not say anything about it, and I want to make clear that I never said Omaha was not safe. Being a strong proponent of the Omaha Police Department, as I have been a hundred percent while being on the council, public safety in general, police and firefighters. Matter of fact, I'll even take that further, with the limited scope of power that we actually have as this legislative body, some of this purpose has been to stick up for city employees across the board, and we know we've been short in lots of departments, and we can blame whatever we want, but we're short in lots of departments. And when you're short in departments, your employees wear thin, they're tired, they have to do a little more work, well, a lot of more work depending on what department you're in. And I feel as I sit here, it's my goal to take care of those city employees regardless of what department they're in, because if you're not taking care of your city employees, you're not taking care of your city, and that's ultimately what it is. And this annexation package, due to the staffing levels that we currently know that we have within the Omaha Police Department, it's troublesome for me for our officers' safety in mind. I'm not saying that we can't do it, I'm not saying we can't adjust staffing levels to continue to make our city safe, that's not what I'm saying. My reason for it is because I ran on public safety, I ran on sticking up for city employees along with police officers, and we asked them to do more because calls are up, as we've seen. It leads me to questions I have, and it's for the good of the cause, this is why we sit here. In all fairness, last week was public comment, and we ran long again, and nobody was here from OPD, but I do know that we have Chief here today. I don't know if you wanted to come up and show anything? You don't have to? Okay, I'll just say that in the article, it mentioned response times and how they are adequate. And what I'll say with response times are, the level of service we provide now is different than we provided before. Chief, come on up.
Scott Gray, Deputy Chief, Omaha Police.
So I'm sure you're going to have a graph, and you're going to show me response times that, I'm not, I'm not that brutal with this, hopefully you know what I'm going to ask you, but if you do have a graph, go ahead and show it, and then I'll have some questions for you. And keep in mind, these questions are because I care. So to the average person, including myself, this is just a graph, and it shows response times of certain minutes. I didn't ask for it because I didn't need to. I know the staffing levels we have of our Omaha Police Department, and I know they're busy, and they're dedicated, and they're hardworking, and I'm not taking that against them. But what I'm saying is, is when we annex, and all credit to the mayor, look, this is her job to annex areas, and we know why we do, we know where the funding stream goes to, and that's great, but again, my job sitting here is to protect city employees, including those within the public safety sector. And when we add more people and we add more responsibilities to them and tell they're staffed better, I feel I'm not doing my job on protecting them. So I would say the graph says that we're doing okay on response times over the years, but let me ask you, because I don't know, I don't know how the response time is calculated, I'm sure nine-one-one takes all the calls, and why don't you tell me how they calculate the response times for the graph you have?
Well, the one I've got shown is priority one response time, so priority one calls are those most serious ones, crimes in progress, you know, like a shooting call, robbery in progress, those kinds of things. So typically, they're going to have our fastest response. The benchmarks that we use are eight minutes and twelve minutes, which may seem like a lot, but in different parts of town, there's kind of different adjustments, and most of the response times are going to be much faster than that eight-minute response, especially on the eastern half of the city. So basically, what this is showing, say, in 2022, for example, is that eighty-seven percent of all of those priority one response times are coming in under twelve minutes, and, I can't read it, sixty? Sixty-three percent are coming in, we're arriving in under eight minutes, and usually typically much faster. We could probably break it down even faster than that, but this is the, these are the benchmarks we've used for over the last two years.
And it looks like the response times are right within that category that we deem we need for level of service. So, I mean, I have a couple of questions because I jotted them down. There's more than just these response times that's important for your data, because what I do know is that, well, I'll ask you, say, say I leave here and I get in a fender bender and nobody's hurt, will the police show up to take a report for my accident?
If it's a nine injury movable accident, then no, we currently don't take those police reports. In terms of dispatching officers too, they can be taken over telephone response.
Is that something we used to do for residents of Omaha?
Yes.
Okay. If I left here today and I drove past the southeast precinct, well, not at this time, but say it's earlier, would the front door be open for me to talk to somebody?
Not right now. In 2020, with the pandemic, we closed all the front desks and transferred those people to the telephone report unit, which was the new unit that we, well, not entirely new, but we expanded that unit so that we could do more reporting without face-to-face contact. And that unit now handles over ten thousand calls a year, I mean, it works really well. So those people that were at those front desks work at the telephone report unit. The only precinct that currently has a front desk staff is the west precinct, just because it's on the opposite side of the city.
So in 2019, I could have went to the southeast precinct at two-thirty in the afternoon, and there would have been somebody there to take a report of something I was involved in?
Most likely.
I'll go with that. So this report call center, do we intend that that's ever going to go away, or is it something that's going to stick around?
No, we actually, we intend to expand it, and we're actually working on software to do online reporting. A lot of cities already have it in place, so the citizens can do their own minor police reports and really never have any contact with city personnel, low-level type incidents. And that does include traffic accidents.
So I also heard about, before I was elected, there was numerous people along the beat and certain police that would work within the ranks before we continued to westward expand with annexation, to help us out in the neighborhoods with dead storage and some of those beat cops that would walk down, up and down South Twenty Fourth Street, or maybe South Side Terrace, or them areas, and then I know for a fact, there was only one, but now there's zero. So would you say that you're adequately shifting personnel to make sure my constituents are happy with calls they have?
Well, yeah, I believe so. I mean, actually, violent crime's down across the city in southeast precinct in terms of call-response, the calls of theirs look really good, I think I have them somewhere Fairly steady, anyway. It's always been a high, this is priority two, so ninety percent of our priority two response times in southeast precinct are falling within our parameters for adequate call-response, so that's high level. In terms of the beats, I mean, we've always had beats downtown, we still do, beats have kind of fluctuated, we've had them in Benson before, bike patrols in different areas, it is, really kind of depends on the crime trends that we're seeing and staffing levels and things like that. We are down right now, we're down about sixty cops, so that does affect our ability to do some of those specialty-type positions.
And you beat me to my next question, which was actual staffing level of those in the uniform bureau that are actually out on the streets, and you're saying we're about sixty officers short right now?
Yeah, department-wide, yeah.
Okay. So when we talk about staffing levels that we want for certain accreditations for our city, and I believe it's nine oh six is what we're...
That's our authorized strength, is nine oh six.
Yeah, we have been at that for a while, and I get it, I know. I know that there are people, including the chief, that are working really hard with classes and lateral classes and recruitment to up them numbers. Not going to change it in my colleagues' votes, but again, this wasn't a knock on the hard-working, dedicated police officers, it was those that I know, those that are out in the field, those that are working really, really hard, and I felt it was my job to say, even a little bit more work for you may not be necessary. And when I say let's take care of what we have, it's across the board in all districts, regardless of what department it is. So appreciate you being here, I know you're only up here for about ten minutes, and you were here a few hours last week and numerous hours this week. Thanks for answering all my questions, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Oh, thank you. Actually, I have my light on because I didn't think that Councilwoman Palermo was going to call you up, and I saw that you sat here for hours, so I just wanted to make sure we called you up. But actually, I just have one question to ask you. I think it's the standard we like to see, two officers per thousand people.
Correct.
I mean, that's kind of the standard that we're going for. This particular package, I do think, is the smallest that we've had in many years, so it's a hundred and eighty residents.
Correct. Yeah, and I do, every year, I do the personnel equipment assessment for the annexation packages have for the last five years, so this is the smallest one that I've certainly seen. And I certainly understand Councilwoman Palermo's concern about the hospital, but it's surrounded by city now, so most of the calls at the hospital were taken anyway because they occurred in the city and they're getting treated at the hospital.
And the other thing is, you also, that you respond to a lot of the county people too, I mean, or the county responds to that hospital a lot too, because a lot of people are coming in from the county, so you'll still have sheriffs going to the hospital to take reports for when it occurred outside the city limits.
Correct. Correct.
So there's kind of a balancer.
Yeah, and a lot of lower-level incidents, again, can report, be reported over the phone as well.
Okay, thank you. I just, I wanted to make that, just that point that we try and have two per thousand, and this is 180 people. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. I would, I would add just briefly too, that I am supportive of the, of the annexation package. And obviously, I approved the previous two items, and I'll support this one too, because it is a very small annexation package, very small population. And the reality is, we probably are providing public safety service out there already. But I think Councilwoman Palermo is not wrong in observing the concern over actual officers on the street, and I know you share it.
Yeah.
Because you can authorize or budget for 906 officers, but the reality is, we have about 840 or 850 on the street. And that's a stretch for you to cover the city. And certainly with the fifth precinct, when the stated goal has been 900. And I know that's what we want to try to get to in, in this budget. And in next budget, and we met with the, the chief just prior to this meeting and the mayor. I noticed their intention to get back to that, probably with a large class shortly of about 45 folks, they think. But even when you do that, given retirements, and over time, maybe you're at 870, 880 in the spring. So I know it's an ongoing fluctuation and ongoing progress to try and keep, to try and keep up. But I think that's the point, main point Councilwoman Palermo was trying to make, is that that's a concerning level when we do all we ask you guys to do throughout the city.
Right, and we are doing everything we can to try to be more efficient with our processes, to reassign people to more patrol activities if, if needed, those kinds of things, where we can move some people around and, and affect the numbers we can. But it is, it, staffing and recruiting are definitely a challenge, not only here, but nationwide.
Thanks. Mr. Palermo?
Yeah, and I, I just wanted to add, I, the mayor's doing a great job. I told her I would say that, so I had to get that in there. But, and she is. And we almost agree every single time when it comes to the police and the budget and the increases that we need. But I want to be careful when we say we're only adding 180. True, we're only adding 180, but we're adding 180, but we're already 40, 50, 60 short. So what you're adding to what you're short makes you still short. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights? Motion and second to approve, roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 74 is approved, five to two. Item 76, an ordinance to approve the contract with Clean Harbors Environmental Services for the household hazardous waste, transportation and disposal to be collected at Under the Sink.
Public hearing on number 76 is today, proponents please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 77, an ordinance to acquire private property for the Signal Infrastructure Phase D1 project.
Public hearing on number 77 is today, proponents please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 78, an ordinance to approve an amendment to the urban development element of the present development zone boundary to include a site generally located at 200th and 4th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number 78 is today, proponents please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 79, an ordinance to approve the schooler office building tax increment financing redevelopment agreement.
Public hearing on number 79 is today. I know we had a proponent by Zoom, but I think he might have fallen off, so we'll have Don.
Yes, Don Seaton, City Planning Department. I'm here for any questions you may have. It's a pretty straightforward TIF agreement for a project you approved for an office rehab a couple of months ago. Chris Viscardi is the owner, principal, project representative. We tried to connect via video conference. He wants you to know that he is watching, watching the proceedings live and I, to relay any questions you have for him by a text message. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
One public hearing can be held for items 80 through 82 for school resource officers. Ordinance is to approve contracts with Westside Community Schools for Westside High School and Westside Middle School. Elkhorn Public Schools for Elkhorn High School. Millard Public Schools for Millard North High School and Millard West High School.
Public hearings on items 80, 81, and 82 are today, proponents please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Item 83, an ordinance to approve an authorized disbursement from the Nebraska Commission on Law Enforcement and Criminal Justice Grant in the amount of $20,250 to fund the Omaha Police Department Gang Unit Firearms DNA Testing Program.
Public hearing on number 83 is today, proponents please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearings closed?
Non-action items, items 84 through 124 do not require a public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing under vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on an agenda for consideration.
Motion to adjourn, I'll second, roll call.
Harding. Johnson. Melton. Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 5:35.